Are we, are we, are we expecting the people who?
I was running late.
Let's, um, okay, without further ado. The Tuesday 16th of February 2016 Planning Commission is hereby called into session. Ms. G., please call the roll.
Ms. Hockenberry?
Here.
Mr. Meeks?
Here.
Mr. Rankin?
Here.
Ms. Rogers?
Here.
Mr. Wodisca?
Here.
Mr. DeShawn and Ms. Teach are absent at this time.
We would...
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I move that we amend the agenda.
Okay.
To take Section B of Old Business before Section A.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motions moved and seconded, all those are in favor, so without any further ado, we will move, well, let's do receipt of petitions. Do we have any petitions from anyone on anything, about anything? No. So, we're going to jump to Old Business, Item B.
Good evening, Commissioners. I am back for your second public hearing on the capital improvements program, FY 17 to 21. The bulk of our work will, is scheduled to be in work session this evening, but I did want to highlight some of the material that I have provided at the dais tonight as part of the public hearing update, and then, of course, we welcome any additional citizen input that might be here for the public hearing. You do have a memo dated today, and it's to target and outline for the work session this afternoon, or this, after your meeting. Couple things of note, we are scheduled to make a recommendation, adopt the CIP at the 22nd next week, so as we end the work session, I'll bring up the motions that we had last year as a template to start, and then, I will specifically ask if there's any particular format motions that you would like staff to have prepared for your consideration on the 22nd. Also, the schools were not available to be here this evening because it's a school board meeting, and they're working on their operating budget, and so, the superintendent has indicated that she will join me at the 22nd meeting. There is not a work session, it is just the public hearing, but will be available to answer any questions. So, during the work session, or at this point, I welcome any specific questions that you have on the schools' projects, which are the Mary Ellen Henderson and the high school, which, of course, are part of the larger P3 process and have not been finalized, so they're back in your CIP, as you see on the screen in pink. The school facility modernization is what you saw last year, and it's just to keep the HVAC plumbing and roofs going. The new item is the school land acquisition, four million to be debt financed, so they have the ability to respond to property opportunities that might surface. If that was to occur per our charter, any land acquisition does have to come through the Planning Commission and Council, so this only provides the funding appropriations, but not the ability to act on any land acquisition. But if you have any questions on those projects that are in the CIP, then I'll be glad to transmit them to the superintendent in advance, so she's prepared to comment and/or maybe provide some information prior. I do want to call your attention that I've just finished this afternoon evening, the CIP survey report, so you have that packet at the dais. Attachment three gives you the full survey questions, which are different than last year. The first question's the same, and the demographics are the same, so we've prioritized projects. But, as you know, with the survey, we attempted to be a little more specific on some priority policy issues, so there are specific questions to a tax rate, not tied to project-specific, but just conceptually, do you support no tax increase, a tax increase that would allow us to do projects in a five-year window, or a smaller tax rate and spread things out over 10 years? And then, we specifically asked questions about funding and matching the transportation dollars and doing the 30% match, and so, you'll see on page four, the percentage results, but also graphically a chart, and you will see in that one, 51%, almost 52% supported two cents targeted to transportation. On page five, the question was two cents for capital reserve, so we could avoid the spikes for things like facilities and roads and other infrastructure equipment, and that one was sort of the mirror opposite. The majority did not support two cents for capital reserve, but in both cases, there still were some that were supportive of that. The next question, which would be four cents for both transportation and capital reserve, in that case, the don't support was almost 60%, so it was clear, there seems to be a support for around two cents, and there seemed to be more support for transportation match, which, of course, we've talked about, leverages four to five dollars for every local dollar. And then, with question seven, that's the open-ended questions, and so, as I did last year, I gave sort of a generalization of themes. This year, we did try a word cloud to see kind of what that looked like, so you'll see that on page eight. It's interesting which words pop, but I'm not sure that it's really that informative to the process. But Attachment one does include all of the comments we received, then Attachment two gives you the frequency of the words used in the word cloud, then we've given you the actual survey, as well as the raw data from Survey Monkey. We had 244 respondents this year with 76 open-ended comments. That is significantly smaller for our second year. It's still, in terms of our normal survey response rate, pretty high, and so, on page one, I kind of gave you a demographic breakdown. This year, we're more evenly split between those that have children in the school system and those that don't, almost a 50-50 split, but it's still a higher percentage than the overall city population, which is 30% of the households have students in our school system. So, I just wanted to call your attention to the highlights of that survey. We will be posting this on the website, and I wanted to make sure that we got it to you this evening, so you'd have time over the next week to have it as part of your decision-making thought process, and, of course, be glad to answer any questions as it relates to the survey. When we go into the work session, that's the second part of this memo, which we will talk about the downtown plaza as a follow-up. We'll be covering the library and the public parking this evening, and then also, transportation. And then, I've included some of the follow-up on the tax rate questions that we had from last work session, and we'll certainly end with any questions you have, additional data that you need before we ask you to take a vote on the 22nd, and then, circle back for any questions on the schools. So, with that, I'd be glad to entertain any questions now during the public hearing process, and then look forward to the work session.
I got confused on your memo where, what is part of the public session and what is part of the work session?
This is the work session outline. I just wanted to give you an update on what we'll be doing in the work session and to officially deliver the survey report. I have no changes to the actual CIP that was presented to you on February 1st to report out tonight.
Okay. Okay, fine. Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Vester, can you remind us how many responses we had last year?
875.
And this year, we had 244.
And last year, we had about 375 responses to 76 this time. So, proportionally, comments to, open-ended comments to the survey seems the same, just the overall quantity is down. And I think that might be due to weather, holiday weekend, and we had a shorter window in which to keep it open.
Well, with the snow, they should have had more time to do the survey.
It was a shorter turnaround.
It was shorter just because I wanted to be able to deliver it to you all tonight, so you have at least one week to consider it. 244 responses, though, when I look at what we had for transportation comp plan chapter, or the work plan, or parks, is still above what we've heard on other survey response, so it's still a good response. And it's 2% of our population, so it's a reasonable threshold. Last year, it was 6%, I believe.
Did we have any explanation of what we meant by transportation projects?
We did in the question, kind of give examples of what transit was and bicycle and so forth.
Ruth, you didn't take the...
And in the transportation question, the way it was worded was, "The city can access significant federal, state, regional grant dollars for multimodal transportation projects like bridges, WNOD trail, bicycle lanes, pedestrian crossings, and more. The grants have a local match requirement. Would you support?"
And that's the one that got the 58% for a tax increase, the transportation project?
Yeah, transportation was 51. Capital reserve, we did, the question read, "The city's currently not funding capital reserve on an annual basis. The reserve reduces spikes in the tax rate when critical capital infrastructure failures occur. Capital reserve ensures there's regular funding things for roof, HVAC, plumbing, as well as vehicle and equipment replacements, no plows, IT." So, we tried to give some context, and that one had almost 40% yes, but it had 45% no. So, it was sort of the opposite of transportation, but a closer spread.
I had a question. And I think, I assume Survey Monkey doesn't let one person sit at their computer and just take the survey over and over again, but there's obviously no way to know that these are unique responses from individual people.
That is correct. We did not limit it to one IP address only, because we have people that go to the library and would use a public machine, and then, they couldn't take the survey, but we are kind of doing honor that people didn't sit there and do it multiple times. Given the diversity of the comments and the split of percentages, I think it's fair that it wasn't swayed one way or the other.
Ma'am? I still think it's good that we're reaching out, even though the turnaround was, or the number of responses was a lot lower, and I am concerned that we not be able to have a town hall on this, you know? I know with time crunch all the way around, and, but, I just think it's good to note that we are doing a lot more outreach. Last year, we did quite a bit than we have in the previous years.
And that is a good point on the town hall, and it is regrettable. It's not going to happen during the Planning Commission deliberation, but we still will have one tied to the overall operating budget, which, of course, will be open to all boards and commissions as council deliberates, in this case, on the CIP recommendation from the Planning Commission. That's March 19th, since I can do a plug for that date, 10:00 a.m. on a Saturday. Pardon me?
You want to say where that community?
Oh, thank you, good point. It'll be at the community center and the senior center, and it'll be an open house format, like we did last year for the CIP, so people can meander the boards and talk to the staff on specific projects and learn in detail, and then, we'll probably have a Q&amp;A period as well. So, Saturday, March 19th, 10:00 a.m., Community Center and the Senior Center room.
Could I ask one other question? Are we going into the different line items here and calling, stating our concerns?
Work session.
Work session?
Unless you want to do it now, unless there's any reason to do it now, but I was thinking we would do it in the work session.
Okay.
Yeah, we'd like for staff to be able to be able to answer your questions on library and transportation to round out the rest, and then, certainly, we would like specific questions and issues as we formulate the motion.
Because I just wanted to make note of the interesting article about Alexandria and their infrastructure, as far as their buildings are concerned, and we only have infrastructure included for this coming year and not in the future, and that really concerns me, because the upkeep is so important, because it ends up costing you so much more money. I mean, those numbers were outrageous.
Okay, so I think we'll do that in the work session.
Okay.
The work session might come sooner than later. I was just checking to see if Mr. Stoddard was up in council yet.
Unless anyone has any questions?
The staff for the WNOD yet.
Nope, okay. So, we'll, okay, we'll pick that up after the commercial break. Okay, Item six, New Business. What's the date of our retreat, and who has not responded?
March 12th is the rescheduled retreat date. It will be held in the Dogwood Room of City Hall, I believe nine to noon.
Okay.
Refreshments will be provided. I know that there are two people who have not responded, but this post-it note is on my desk, so I don't know who has.
Who has not responded?
I responded.
Well, so, we're all going to the best of your knowledge?
Oh, I, no, I can't go the 12th.
Oh.
I was good for the 5th, but I'm not good for the 12th.
There were more commissioners available for the 12th than for the 5th.
Well, do you want us to reschedule? And the question that we never, I don't think we ever got a consensus on, is whether it's better to do it on a weekend or a weekday night, so, for example, Tuesday night at 7:00 to 9:00?
I mean, I could do it, I mean, I could do it Tuesday night, it just...
Which is better?
It just happened to be an all-day scout event, so I had no choice but not to be there.
Do you want us to reschedule for a day later in the year?
I mean, I would prefer it, but, I mean, I also know you guys want to get this done, so.
Well, no, 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 no.
Lyndy's like, no.
I want you there.
Okay.
Well, we were, we were trying to get everyone...
Right. Yeah, it's just unfortunate. I was looking at it again, and there's no way I can make it.
So, if we go into April, do you feel that scouts go crazy in April?
They do. They have to go camping.
No, we, well, I have camping at the end of April.
Well, so, it has to be after spring break, that's the...
Yeah, just, I think it has to be after spring break. I mean, April is...
In the evening is fine with me.
Yeah, evening is fine with me, and...
I'll show up whenever.
Was there a reason we weren't doing it in, on an evening? By the way?
I don't think that there was a spoken aversion to that. I think that Mr. Snyder was simply asking for Saturday mornings.
Yeah.
As long as it's not on an EDA night.
No, it's...
I mean, if it, if it could be the first half of April, the 2nd or 9th, I'm free. I just looked.
On a Saturday?
On a Saturday, if we did a Saturday.
Yeah, April 9th.
Actually, oddly, your schedule is free day, the only one I found.
April 9th.
April 9th?
April 9th. No, that's, April 9th is a Saturday.
That's not Easter's.
No, Easter's in March this year.
No, Easter's...
Easter's March 27th.
Spring break is early.
Sure.
You know, let me just check one thing while we're talking, but I'm pretty sure April 9th works. Okay, anyone else with new business? Nope. Other business? Any other business? Nope. Motion to approve the 19 January 2016 minutes. Yes, Ms. Rogers?
I have some amendments, or at least a question.
Okay.
I call everyone's attention to line 449 through 523.
Oh.
19th of January.
Ms. Hockenberry. Ms. Hockenberry.
It's about the electronic participation, and it seems that Mr. Rankin had a motion. Ms. Hockenberry seconded, but there is no, there's no, Mr. Rankin moved and Ms. Hockenberry seconded, but there's no indication that there was ever a vote.
Okay.
449 through 523. I mean, I'm, I'm just...
January 16th.
Okay, thank you. I've got...
So, I can't remember what the vote was. I'd like to vote no, but I think I did vote yes.
Okay.
We had to vote it.
Any other amendments? No, okay. Motion to approve January 19th minutes as amended.
Mr. Meeks, I approve, move to approve the January 19th.
Moved in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Excellent. So, the 1st of February 2016.
And I have a correction on this one. In line 51, it says, "Including and contribution from Bob Young to install street furniture is a work plan," or a work study, or something or other along, he's not contributing.
Gee, I was giving him a lot of credit here.
I know. He's not contributing the, but he did all the, a study on it.
Okay, to study the installation of street furniture?
He had a report on, okay, probably be best to say it was a report.
Okay.
To report on.
Make it easy.
Any other changes? So motion to approve the minutes?
So move?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
You were...
And I abstain.
Reaching for your microphone like you were going to move or second or something. Okay.
I was looking to abstain.
All right, fine. Okay, so motions approved. Planning Commission reports.
Well, I could. I understand from Mr. Snyder that there's a work session this evening with the City Council on the West Broad Street Small Area Plan. So depending on the outcome of that and what guidance they give will determine whether our, whether our suggestions and our recommendation is going forward. If it's not, I suggest we talk to members of City Council. That's all.
Okay, so I did our annual report in front of the City Council, and it went, I think, generally speaking, well. We avoided controversy as best we could. You know, one thing we could, will absolutely save for this retreat, which is on April 9th, is, you know, because a couple of City Council people have said this to me, and I think we got into this with the West Broad Area Plan, was a little more vision for what's happening in the city. And it came up particularly with the George Mason Project and this issue of apartments. How many is too many? How many is not enough, et cetera, et cetera. So sort of a larger, broader vision, kind of a vision thing, but April 9th.
But could I just?
Yes, ma'am.
As far as the EDA meeting went, they did compose a letter, which you saw.
Yes.
And you gave them your support on the letter. Are we going to do anything as a planning commission?
You know, it's a good question, and this is an interesting place to talk about it. I was kind of saving it for the work session. You know, we've got this flow chart that we're sort of approving as part of the CIP process, which means essentially that we are never really, I mean, the way the PPA is going to work, we are never, we the planning commission, but really we the city, isn't going to have the opportunity to have really any opinion on what's actually being approved for the referendum. So it's backing into an approval process because you have a deal with a developer. And I don't know, it's an interesting thing as to where, when and where we would do something. I don't know. I've thought a lot about it, and the answer is I don't know.
I thought that the EDA letter was very well-written, and I know there was a lot of revision that night on Eric's original letter, so there was a lot of work put into it. But I do think the sentiments are exactly what we've been talking about.
You know, the, it's an interesting thing as to what, relative to the CIP, which obviously is a role that we have. You know, if I were trying to get this referendum to not pass, I think I would do it exactly as they're doing it, which is to keep this in the closet for as long as possible and then sort of bring out the final plan, which is the referendum, and say, okay, this is what we're doing. So I don't know. I haven't figured out how cranky to get about it.
Maybe we should coordinate with the EDA and, as well as sending a letter to whoever they sent it to. I've forgotten who it went to. Did it go to?
It went to the City Council and the School Board.
We could send a letter to the news press.
It's a thought. I think we're all very concerned about this situation, and certainly the EDA is extremely concerned about it. So it's the two groups that are decidedly being left out. They're going to have to do a lot of work after it's all done.
I mean, I just think it's, it's important that people other than city officials, citizens, know about our concerns.
One thing I was thinking about is, I wonder if we could request a joint meeting with the School Board, which are, you know, School Board to Planning Commission, and just, and talk through like the, what, what are the things that we have to do to support their process? And, you know, just make, and then look and have some back and forth about how we want this, how we want this to work. Because, you know, we don't, we've never, I don't think we've ever had a meeting with the School Board.
I was just going to say that. We've never had any workings together with the School Board.
We've met with council, the EDA, we've met with...
It's always been kind of around us.
We met with the Architectural Review Guys. I mean, maybe we really need to sit down with the School Board and try to explain to them.
The process.
Because we have to, I mean, we have certain roles that we have to play if this land is going to be developed. We have to zone it.
Have you seen the flow chart?
I know. But that's why I'm saying, I think we need to talk to them about...
Where is the flow chart?
I mean, we're, we have to be involved with any sale of land.
No, I was just reviewing it before I talked. You mean, you're talking about this one, right?
Yep.
Yeah, 6-6. I was just looking at it before I spoke. Because, but each of these little, you know, things represent a lot of things that have to be done inside of it. It's just, this is not really a plan. This is just a, here's the steps. But I think one, I'm just wondering if it would be good to try to, I'm not sure we would get the joint meeting. Maybe, you know, it's a busy time. But I think that I would like to see us make an effort to request the meeting and, and just say, you know, we just want to take some time to walk through our side of it to see how we can be supporting you best and make sure that we come out with a good process.
So, technical question. If the referendum is in November, it has to be approved by the council by July. Is that correct?
Yeah, July, early August would be the latest in order to get it filed in court on time for it to be on the ballot.
So as a purely practical matter, we would get... Maybe, maybe two?
Yeah.
For 10 acres, which would be sort of an interesting, well...
No, I don't disagree with you, but I think that...
Maybe a meeting with the School Board prior to then is, is a good idea.
Yeah.
I have a question. This flow chart, I assume, has to do with the design and build of the school, but obviously the whole deal here is that there's going to be more stuff designed and built. That doesn't seem to be addressed by this flow chart, like the commercial stuff. So where does that fit into the timeline?
Yeah, what you all are looking at is the school CIP document that was adopted, and that is their flow chart for their normal school process when they do design-build, as they did with TJ or Mary Ellen Henderson. That is a component of the larger project that you just identified with the P3 that would have the economic development. And...
And so my, my point is like, when the referendum goes...
So let me get to my PowerPoint.
Will there be plans written for the commercial component, or is that somehow happening on a different time?
The council is currently deliberating with the School Board as the two legal entities on the RFPs that were received to determine if they meet the core components of the RFP and whether they would proceed. If they choose to proceed, and I'm just getting to my PowerPoint slide because I put the schedule in there, if I can get to the right.
So it's page 29 of your PowerPoint?
Yep.
Yeah.
Slide 29 on page 15 of the handout. Once they decide if they're going to proceed with the Phase 2 of the RFP, there will be more public discussion after they've drafted the RFP, and that actually would be a public document that the community would see and could weigh in on. And then the vendor who's going to propose on Phase 2, they would just submit if they decide. Then we'd go through another review process, and this final selection of the preferred proposer would be determined. At that point, there is more public information that can happen, and it's not quite as narrow as the legal prohibitions that to date have had the EDA and the Planning Commission not be active participants in the process. And then it would be July, as Mr. Meeks noted, for the authorization of the referendum. And at that point, the comprehensive agreement would be on the key terms be decided, and it'd be a much more public process so that people would know what they were voting on. I know that the city manager has her concerns directly from Mr. Meeks prior to the last work session, and of course has received the EDA letter and is looking at it with the city attorney as to what options could be undertaken to have you more involved.
And maybe, maybe I'm just being dense, or maybe the answer is we won't know until the secret squirrel meetings end. But I, it totally makes sense to me that the School Board and the school people are making a plan for what the school's going to look like. And presumably, since this is a public-private thing, somebody's thinking, I'm going to build a 50-story apartment building, or whatever it is. Is that, is the, is it expected that the commercial components, like a, like a architectural drawing of a Mason Row kind of thing, that will be part of a referendum? You see what I'm saying? Or is it more like, hey, we made a deal. The schools applied ahead with designing their school. Some developer says, yeah, I'll build that thing, but now I'm entering in my process of figuring out what exactly I'm going to build.
Before the referendum goes out, there'd be more information on the economic development piece. What's being proposed that would fit on the other land, how it helps with the financing. There'd be the whole package if this stays as a P3 effort. I do want to also highlight there is sort of the, a fork in a road decision right now. Council and School Board can proceed with RFP 2, Phase 2, or they can elect to stop, separate them, and do a more traditional design-build for the school and a more traditional economic development effort based on what's, looks like the best financial deal might be for the city. So a lot of things are being weighed, and...
But that other path would be challenging because of the, I mean, we can't finance it through the CIP, the building of the school, without some other funding source.
Bifurcating the two projects creates a challenge on the financing and the timing. Not insurmountable because other localities have done it, but as you all clearly know, in the CIP, that's a heavy financial lift.
Well, so, so it raises two questions. So one is, what are we voting on with this CIP? Are we actually voting on the $100 million as a, as a potential?
You mean like we have the past three or four years?
Well...
I mean, it's got the pink, it's the other funding source.
Except it's a placeholder, but it's different this year because it's not like a placeholder in an amorphous...
Well, in this year, the other funding source could become apparent, which is what it's always been. You know, it's coded as we're approving it if some other funds become available. And those could become available through this process, right?
Yes, it is still pink as it was in the motion you did last year that the financing plan has not been finalized. It is a little bit more...
Darker pink?
Developed. Darker pink because there's a process going, but the outcome is still not known. So it in some ways is no different than the only if green. It's just, I called it out pink, so it'd be very clear to see that it's related to the school financing plan.
Well, so this is, this is a, so let me get your opinion on this. I'm interested. So in the past, it was if funding becomes available. And all of a sudden, we actually theoretically may have something cooking. If you don't like the way it's cooking hypothetically, are you opposed to this as a, as an item in the CIP? And, and one of the reasons I ask that question is because we have challenged sometimes CIP stuff and sometimes been overridden because of the way the money was financed or, you know, we didn't think it would should be part of this or part of that. We scrutinized the heck out of City Hall as to why it cost as much as it did and what was happening. And so it got, we essentially kind of took that out. So on this, are we, does, in the past, you could, you could sort of vote yes, if you will, on this because this was still an amorphous...
Right. It was in the out years.
Yeah.
Sometimes we put it to the out years, but you can't do it this year, so they're going for a referendum.
So is that a big deal? Is that troubling? Should we, should we have this drilled down, or should we, should we? I'm, I'm not sure as it relates to the CIP. I mean, everybody's opinion.
Yeah, I mean, I think if you, if you think that, you know, we shouldn't build a school, I would, I would definitely have to get that out. But if you're like, I think we should build a school, I'm just not sure if this is the right way to build a school. I don't know. I mean, because this doesn't lock us into any particular way to build a school. I mean...
Well, it does. It does. Because we're, I think, and I'm asking this as a question. I think it means that we're supportive of a process that I'm not sure we're supportive of.
That's for sure.
Cindy just said you could split it and do it more traditionally, so that would work.
Well, the council could split it.
Well, but I'm saying like, we as the Planning Commission, if we said, yes, we think we need a, a new school, which again, not everyone has, not everyone has to say that. I'm saying just by, just by having the CIP this way, it doesn't mean that we are saying, yes, it has to go down this PPP thing because it could split apparently. I'm just saying they're, they're not necessarily tied, right? I mean...
Yeah. So in the CIP, it's specifically worded school financing plan slash referendum-approved-based financing plan. I put out the sample motions from last year, which will be part of our work session, but I just did it now to show out that the first motion, you approved all of the CIP excluding the high school of Mary Ellen Henderson, and then motion number two did a specific vote on that. And so that could be worded in a way that if the majority wanted to make a statement on the financing plan or the process, the Planning Commission could elect to do that. And then the third motion went into the City Hall specific funding, which isn't relevant.
Yeah, I guess my question related to what you're asking is, is there a way in the CIP, for our, our participation in the CIP, for us to suggest a school is appropriate, but not via a particular funding, a particular approach? You know what I'm saying? Like, I don't think the approach is covered by the CIP, but could we say like, yes, I like that, but not if we do it this way?
Well, so I have two concerns. One is the approach to getting the money, which we've talked a lot about. The second one is, I just think how much scrutiny the library and the City Hall and some of these other things, that we're spending a tiny fraction of $100 million. We, we, we wanted to know, how'd you get $8 million? How'd you get $6 million? Why does this cost $600,000 for windows for a new fire station? We've asked those questions, but we've sort of accepted for four years that it costs 100 and something million dollars to build a school.
In previous years, we had work sessions with the superintendent, that she went through costs of schools. I mean, I think.
We've, we've had some general discussions about cost of schools.
I mean, on the same level that we had about cost of the library.
Well, I believe it's got to be expensive, but I don't think it's, like, is it, is it 86 million? Is it 104 million? Is it, I mean, what's the number?
There's different ways that you, this high school could be done. There, there's ways where we could use some of the building we have now, but we're choosing not to explore that.
But we have gotten into none of those details.
Right.
Because it's just been a placeholder.
I know. I mean, this was...
Because we're not included in this process.
Right.
Well, and because of the, back to the process.
Yeah.
This, this conversation about the money has definitely come up. I have never been personally comfortable over all these years with the $100 million price tag. And it kept getting sort of, you know, kicked down the road, like, well, we can't afford it anyway. So unless something becomes available, some great proposal, then, you know, the number of 100 million should stand. But if it's in this current year and we're starting to get into details about what's happening, I have a real problem with that number. I mean, it needs, it needs to be much more...
I feel like it's going to go to a referendum, no matter what we do.
Yeah.
And so this is one of those things that it's not up to us. It's up to the citizens. It's going to get voted on, so...
We can, we can make our...
Sure, but I'm just saying like...
Well, this is its first stop.
No, no, that's fine, but I'm saying like, is it 100 million or is it 85 million? Well, that's going to be in the referendum. Whatever. I mean, I'm talking about the high school. You know, and so in my mind, we could talk about it, but unlike the library or some of the other things that may or may not end up going to a referendum, I mean, like, those we would have scrutinized because that's, you know, we're the line. But I think, I, it's fine. I mean, I just think that, and I see what you're saying, and this whole process is, is awkward and unique. But I don't know that, like some of those other ones, like the City Hall stuff, you know, there's going to be lots of scrutiny by lots of people in the... you know, there's gonna be lots of scrutiny by lots of people in addition to us.
But I think that Rob makes a really good point. We fret over the windows for the fire department, you know? Did they last as long as they should be? How much was it? And basically, what we're being told about the 100 million is that they're looking at $350 per square foot at 275,000 square feet. That's all we have.
Right. Okay. But what would they do? They don't have a design for a school, so how would they give you more specifics right now?
I...
I mean, seriously.
Well...
You wouldn't have the specifics till you had the design for the school.
Well, no, 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 but Andy, so, part of the CIP process, and you've been here when we did City Hall, so with City Hall, we said, "Okay, this is great. You have a design that costs 14 million. You got eight. Come back to us with the $8 million plan." Which is, I hate using this example, because it makes me sound like I'm running for some kind of Republican office, but like, in my family, we say, "Okay, we need to buy a new car. We have this amount of money. That's this kind of car." I mean, that's how budgeting is supposed to work. You don't say, "Oh, it's 100 million dollars." It says so on the paper.
Yeah, we could put a lower number in there, sure.
I guess...
How would you pick a lower number?
Well, I guess my feeling is that if this is all the detail we can have at this point, that it's 350, you know, per square foot, then maybe it's not ready for the CIP in '17.
Well, how would they get us more details without putting a bunch of money into the CIP?
Well, I just say, I just, let me just say, if this was the detail I was given for 8 million, for the library, if they came to us and said, "We need $8 million, because we're gonna spend this much per square foot," there's no way we'd recommend leaving in the CIP.
Totally agree.
There's no way.
We'd at least move it out a couple of years.
We say, "Why don't we wait a year till you know what you're gonna do with the money?"
The library asked for 12 million bucks, or whatever. We gave them eight, based on no plan, just a lower number. We could do the same thing here.
No, 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 they had it.
Oh, no, 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 no. I'm saying, two years ago.
They came back with a very detailed plan.
It was very detailed. We specifically picked that number.
We specifically picked the lower number...
Right.
Not based on any particular plan, but based on years earlier, there had been an $8 million plan, and I guess I remember them saying, like, "This doesn't make a lot of sense."
No, 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 no. We have the library here. This is like a Woody Allen movie, where you are arguing about a poet, and the poet's standing behind you in the film. We said to them, "You don't have a plan, you just have dollars per foot." And they said, "Okay, we'll go get a plan." They got an excellent plan, it was less. We scrutinized the plan another year and kicked it out.
I have it at home. It was a better plan.
Listen, if you guys want to take a different approach, that's fine. This is a very different thing than the library.
Yes.
We may note that the library sits unchanged in the years that we've talked about it. I don't think we have that luxury with the high school.
Oh, please.
And so, we need to figure out a way to get this done. And if the way is, okay, we're gonna put a million bucks in this year CIP, so they can come back with drawings, so they can give us a more accurate number, then let's do it. But I don't, I think it's hard to compare it to the library or the windows and the fire station. It's a very, very different beast.
I disagree with you on this one point, though. We have been talking about replacing this high school for more than 20 years.
I mean, we're out of time.
I've got three copies of different reports where we, and one of them, I spent, Cindy and I spent, what, a year of our life on one task force?
Yep.
And we had a giant report for it. And that was like, eight years ago? Nine years ago? Yeah.
Time is flying, but yes, it's been a while.
Yeah, and so, we've done it over and over again. We have been talking about it for 20 years, so we're quite willing to put it off.
Well, I think we're out of time.
But the other situation with putting in another number, another arbitrary number, because 100 million is an arbitrary number, but one of my big problems with a lot of the things that the schools have done is just terrible materials. And I don't want to see that happen.
Let's bump it to 150.
And this big situation of a brand-new high school, because it's just been, you know, the amount of money that you need for good materials is very important. And if you keep, you know, cutting that, then we're gonna get stuff that needs to be replaced constantly. I mean, stuff up at the new middle school that needs to be replaced already, that looks like the Dickens, because it wasn't good quality to begin with. And it really worries me. The other situation is, is not just the money, but the process. And, you know, to do anything with that land up there has to come back to us.
Yep.
And I don't know if they realize that or not. I don't know if it's a difference, if it's leased, whether that has to come back to us, but I don't know if it's sold.
The land still needs to be zoned, so that will be coming to the Planning Commission.
Right.
There will be a site plan.
And, you know, maybe, maybe they need to think about playing nice.
Well, but, so, on Cindy's, whether it's the school's flow chart, or it's Cindy's, page 29 from her PowerPoint presentation, so there is a decision, based on this, to go, to have a comprehensive agreement and to go to referendum by July of 2016. City Council authorizes referendum July 2016, and the public referendum is November. So, that is a two-month period.
Right, that's why I was asking, so is the referendum is gonna be on plans for the commercial components that are equivalent to, like, site plan of a Mason Row style project? Or is it, that's what I'm trying to find out.
It will have to be...
It has to be.
By definition, fairly baked, in order to justify these numbers.
What is the definition of fairly baked?
It's gonna be building density. I mean, it will be quantity of units.
So, over the summer, it'll be like, "Hey, we got a 15-story apartment building with 800 units, and it's got two floors of retail, and, I don't know, a mattress store, whatever we think is cool." And it'll be like that, and then the referendum will be for the whole kit and caboodle.
It'll be, my guess would be, it would be total gross leasable area, total gross residential area, total number of units, building heights, because...
But then, even then, they'll still, I mean, this is the thing, and I don't think this is ideal, I don't know of a better process, but we will have, to the extent that we ever have, veto power, because we could just not approve, because that's not gonna bind, I mean, there'll still be a special exception process, right? Even if there's a referendum that says, "Yes, we agree with that," they still gotta come and get a special exception, which we could shoot down and blow up the whole thing, which I know no one's gonna wanna do, and that's why we don't wanna go through the process, but I don't think...
No, because it's not a special exception in this case, because it's not zoned.
And so, the referendum would include the zoning.
So, if you approve, if the city council approves a referendum, they have by definition accepted the amount of building that's going up there. And we have, unless we overturn that...
Well, that's what I'm trying to...
We have accepted that zone.
That's what I'm trying to clarify, like, the referendum isn't just to spend whatever money we have to spend, it's on the zoning.
It's gonna have to be. Because the finances will be like this.
Okay, because the developer will require it.
Zoning and everything.
Correct. So, that's her fork in the road.
Yeah.
The council has elected to have the referendum both on the financial as well as the concept plan. It will be a more developed concept plan, like you saw with Mason Row. It will not be down to site plan and road beds and lane widths and all of that level of detail at that point.
That's the other thing, roads, you know?
It still requires rezoning of the land.
I mean, roads, the planning of roads in a complex plan like this, it's...
The core outline will have to be there.
But if we, let's hypothetically say, we support this number based on no detail, and we support the gross building area based on very little detail. Let's say we take those two leaps of faith, and let's say, as we get in the process, we discover that there's some public works part of this that's gonna cost six times more than originally budgeted for. Who's paying for it as one detail? How do we do that as part of this deal?
You asking me?
Yeah. How would you see some of, so, you've seen the detail that's gone into Mason Row or some of these other things. How would you just see the mechanism of this working, based on approval of the plan, in essence, July 16? The referendum is November of 16. When do we flush that out? When do we flush out the actual cost of the school?
I don't know.
If you're gonna deliver in the fall of '19, you need to know what you're building now, today.
As part of the current negotiations for Phase 2, and then moving into the finalizing the comprehensive agreement, those level of details would have to be worked out. They'd have to actually know what they're building, what the parking is, and a lot of the core financial and economic development benefits. That part's not there yet, because they haven't issued and decided to issue the RFP Phase 2.
Okay, well, we have the schools next week.
Yes.
Okay, that'll be exciting.
I can pass this discussion along, and if there's any other questions you have.
I mean, I would say, you know, it sounds like an option if, you know, I don't know how this works, because it's this complicated coordination with the developer, which I know some people despise that, but it's the only way, I think, that we're gonna pay for it. And so, we should try to figure out a way to make that work. Would be to what? Delay everything by a year to give everybody more time to work out those details? I'm just trying to think, like, practically speaking, like, I don't think we're gonna shoot down the whole thing, so...
Well...
If we push all the 100 million back by a year, maybe give a million this year to work on the plan.
No, so, I mean, as a practical matter, what, think about what the real date is. You have to get a referendum through.
Right, so, I mean, say, push the referendum.
But what happens if the referendum, for whatever reason, let's say we had a crystal ball, and we don't have to go into the details. Let's say the referendum doesn't look like it will pass in November 2016. So, it doesn't matter what we would agree to, because the referendum didn't go through. So, they'd be better off holding the referendum till it did go through.
Right, well, that's why I'm asking. We could, in the CIP, push it all back by a year, saying, like, "Hey, we don't think you're gonna get your stuff together in time to get a passable referendum this year, so we think you should spend a whole year, spend some money, we gotta give them some money to figure that out and go for it." Like, I'm saying, that's something we could do. My point is, like, I'm not trying to just argue with you guys. If we wanna do a high school, and you guys think the current way's not gonna work, let's figure out a way that we think would work.
Well, so, I would just refresh your memory that we asked them three years ago for more detailed plans on it.
Okay, that's fine. So, what would we do now? Go back in time?
Well, we were willing to give them money three years ago.
I understand. That argument doesn't help. So, should we consider pushing it back by a year?
Let's ask the schools.
Because, and we're gonna vote on it like, five minutes after we ask the schools, so...
No, we got all night. I'm bringing coffee.
No, I think, I think...
I'm saying, the same night. We vote next time, right? We talk to schools, and we vote that night.
Well...
Well, I think this discussion's been good, because I think it's clarified some questions in my head, I hope it's clarified in yours, and we'll be ready with them.
And we can defer the vote next week. There's no reason why we can't push back.
It's true. I would just ask that you try to get it done by March 7th, so that I can get it into the city manager's proposed budget on the 14th.
I just don't feel comfortable with voting on it the same night we're trying to ask questions, because we'll go round and round, we've...
But we can't ask the questions tonight, because they're not...
Right.
Yeah.
But we've had a lot of questions, so we're gonna wait to ask the superintendent two weeks from now.
Yeah, I will pass these on and give her the timestamp of your meeting, so she can listen to it directly. And we might wanna have, as we did last year, the motion separated, so that if you're not comfortable with the school portion, you could elect to proceed with the rest of the CIP. Mr. Meeks, I think you were sort of still in Commissioner's comments piece.
Yes.
And so, I wanted to come back to Ms. Rogers' point about West Broad and the discussion that council's having in tonight's work session. This was intended to be a follow-up to their council meeting, when Mr. Stoddard did a big presentation on a very full agenda, because of combined two meetings. And so, they elected not to pursue additional conversation on the 8th, but to have a work session tonight, just to get their more questions out, make sure they were up to speed. I have on here the council's proposed agenda, and what the mayor had asked Wyatt and I to do is to look at the, with Mr. Snyder and you all, if March 7th might work as a joint work session with the Planning Commission, because of the comments that Ms. Rogers made at the council's meeting. So, I didn't want you to think that tonight was the only work session council has, and currently, they're scheduled to adopt, I think it's the 28th. Sorry, just went down too far. I think it's 28th, so that it would be done before the budget.
Yep.
So, there's still march that they would be deliberating, so I just wanted to close that loop, since Mr. Snyder's down with council.
He's behind you now.
Ah.
You're all here. Okay.
Okay, I said it right, and we're good to go.
How quickly can you do the WNOD Trail Master Plan?
Do you say three minutes or 30?
30, 20, 15.
15, 20, 30, whatever you want. Was the voice not on the microphone?
I was shooting for seven. You do it in seven minutes? Okay, go. So, that is Item A, WNOD Trail Master Plan. And...
Anyone, did anyone have any particular issue or question with the WNOD Trail Master Plan?
I have some questions.
You do? You had some questions, I knew, but anyone?
No.
All right.
Thank you, Chair Meeks, members of the Planning Commission. These slides, I think, are very similar to what the Planning Commission has seen in the past, so I'll try to move fairly quickly through them, but please stop me if you have questions or you need additional information. I do wanna point out some information that is in the staff report before I jump into the slides. One of the things that's called out in the staff report is that this is sort of a continuing process, planning for the WNOD. That section, Comprehensive Plan and Planning History, lays out that this really has been an ongoing process, first with the Transportation Chapter in the comp plan, the Parks Chapter in the comp plan, the Bike Master Plan. All of these things are suggesting elements that should be in the plan, and this master plan is an attempt to combine all those things into a single vision for the plan. Fiscal impact information has been provided, as well as a summary of changes that are made since the Planning Commission last saw the plan on December 7. That's provided in the last section there in the staff report. So, with that, I'd like to, yes?
Could I ask a quick...
Yes.
So, is this plan going to be attached to the comp plan and will become a part of the comp plan?
So, I think what would happen is that, as the comp plan is updated in the future, the Planning Commission, the Comprehensive Plan would make reference to it, and so, you would see it. It would say, you know, "This plan is referenced by the comp plan, it's a guiding document," but it doesn't officially become part of the comp plan and carry that same weight and force that the comp plan does.
And that wouldn't happen until amendments were made to the comp plan, or would that be an immediate incorporation?
It would be done as other chapters of the comp plan are updated. If you look at the way the master plans are adopted, they don't go through the required adoption process of a comp plan change, which is so many weeks' notice, such and such a formal action by the Planning Commission, so many weeks' notice by the city council, and such and such a formal action. So, again, the WNOD, thinking about it as a park, why parks? And this slide has been very common, it came up in the Parks Chapter, now this chapter,[1647.41] been very common. It came up in the Parks Chapter, now this chapter, that parks provide social and health benefits, those sort of equity benefits, environmental benefits, and also economic benefits in terms of attracting labor and business to the city. Why the WNOD? The concept in the master plan of a connected network of parts with nodes and connections. The WNOD can serve as a spine within that system. It has the advantage relative to the other linear parks of already being in place. No property acquisition or Eastman acquisition is required to realize the vision in this plan. Planning process, as I mentioned in the staff report, this is the next step in the planning for the WNOD. This has been going on since 2014. And the catalyst for this was, for this work was really the ride made by the Chair of the Citizens Advisory Committee on Transportation, the CACT, Paul Baldino, riding the trail and photo documenting sort of what is available on the trail and other communities that's not available here in the city. Developing the master plan, there's been an extensive set of meetings and work sessions with other boards and commissions, community meeting, coverage in the local news, a real attempt to get this out there and to fold together all of the ideas from other groups. History in the park, originally operated as a railroad, that's why it's called the Railroad Regional Park, later acquired by Virginia Power for use of those, those high tension power lines. And then eventually, the first mile of the WNOD Trail opened in 1974 here in the city, and now the park stretches 45 miles from Purcellville to Sherrlington. Along the trail, things that other communities provide, public art, plazas, commemoration, history markers of the trail, advertising, wayfinding, branding. What's available in the city, some of those same facilities, but not necessarily in as collected or coordinated a fashion. There are historical markers. There is seating. There are some plazas that have already been started, and these present real opportunities to fill these in and partner city and private resource, city and civic resources. And then, just a general lack of identity, or maybe an identity that you don't necessarily want. It doesn't look as nice, as pretty, as well landscaped as other communities. It also happens that the city's portion of the park is split by many aggregate crossings. The vision for the park, which I've read out a number of times, developing the WNOD is a great street, a greenway within the city, providing various opportunities, recreation, relaxation, transportation, preserving and improving the environment, recognizing that parks are part of it, and connecting the city's commercial and residential neighborhoods. Vision for the park, again, sort of extending the WNOD from the east to the west of the city, updating the crossings, updating and enhancing the existing plazas that civic sources have already, have already launched, and then rerouting the trail at 29. And it turns out, this is not a new idea in this planning effort. It's, it's been around for quite a number of years, going back three decades now. Enhancing the trail, separating out walking and biking traffic, providing lighting that is available for the same hours that the trail is already open, 5:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., and that comes from Nova Park's side. They're the, the owners of the trail, the park. And also, making sure that the lighting is designed in such a way that it does not pollute into neighboring properties, making sure that it casts down and doesn't inhibit sort of dark sky initiatives. Using the entire park, taking advantage of that entire 100-foot width that Nova Parks owns, providing more tree canopy where it's possible, and providing defined boundaries between public and private space. Making sure that where the park and the street cross, that the park is the dominant feature, not the street. And then rerouting the crossing, the, so bringing the crossing here down a long four-mile run, crossing at Gresham Place, taking advantage of the park space that already exists in Isaac Crossman Park, and then connecting it into the WNOD at Benjamin Vanneker this way. This has a number of advantages. The, the route, as shown here, can actually preserve the existing walking path in Isaac Crossman. The new portion of the trail needed to support bicycle traffic would actually go north of four-mile run. Activity spaces, the idea of having this mix of natural areas and then small plazas, telling, using the plazas to tell the story of the park within the city of Falls Church, and helping to brand the city. So, Veterans Common, incorporating low-scale lighting, kiosk of sort of information about nearby venues, upcoming city events, allowing for connection to a bike share station when the city implements those. Walter Mess Plaza, telling the story of Walter Mess and his contributions to the park, tying into existing features that are already there, like the stone that's been donated, as well as the exercise equipment that's already available. Park Avenue, using a small plaza as an end cap to Park Avenue, other, other considerations, other designs were considered. For example, the recreation of a historic station or the idea of a pavilion. Those ideas have been moved to an appendix within the plan. The plan calls out that this small-scale plaza at the end of Park Avenue is the preferred alternative, and that the other designs are kept in the plan because people asked for them, people wanted to consider them, but they're not the right move at this time in the city. But they're kept in there in case the city wants to explore those at a later date. Western Gateway, taking advantage of the existing storage shed, treating it with public art, special facilities, special pavers. Cost estimates, those have now been computed for the project. The big number is down at the bottom. The total project cost comes out to about $4.5 million. And what's included in that is the treatments to the WNOD, including the plazas, the crossings, the providing separate trails, adding lighting, updating the landscaping along the entire trail, as well as changes to make that connection to and through Crossman Park, the aggregate crossing, at Gresham Place, trail expansion, that second trail going north of four-mile run, as well as lighting through that section of the park as well. And then, if you'll notice, the very bottom line is the cost to the city. The expectation is that the city would be able to get 80-20 grant funding split, 80% coming from the grant side, 20% on the city's side, bringing the city's total cost down to $900,000. Now, I'll just wrap up with the first two slides again, sort of the benefits of parks, that, that three-part benefit that they bring, and why the WNOD, a backbone in the city's connected park system, and the vision for the park.
Okay, so, can you, we'll just do questions really quickly. I did not understand the Crossman Park part of this. So, would bikes be allowed in Crossman Park?
Not on the existing trail, no.
Okay, but then there would be another trail?
Yes. So, consistent with the idea of the plan of separating out pedestrian and bicycle traffic, the existing stone dust trail in Crossman Park would be preserved as it is. Bicycle traffic would be expected to travel sort of along Gresham Place or along the sidewalk, which might have to be widened. And then, just before touching that stone dust trail, the bike portion of the traffic would be expected to go across four-mile run, and then that trail would travel parallel to four-mile run on the north side.
Got it. Okay. All right. And, okay, thank you very much. Ms. Rogers?
That was one of my questions, too. I, sorry, I wanted to make sure that the, the stone trail was still going to be there. I don't see any funds included in the estimated cost for maintenance of the, all these new plazas and things. Is that part of the plan or no?
Maintenance costs are included. Not in the presentation. They are included in the master plan itself. The cost estimate per year for maintenance comes out to $30,000. There is language in the plan about finding sponsors to try and maintain these plazas and these parks. Already, we've had some ideas about reaching out to the Legion, the American Legion, to maintain the Walter Mess Plaza, as well as some interest from the gardening club within the city. I just heard about that tonight. They might have an interest in, in sponsoring some of the efforts as well.
And, but if we don't get those, that interest, that they will be maintained? Because that's-
Yes.
-an integral. Okay.
Yeah, the expectation is that they'd be maintained.
All right. And would you give me a quick explanation of the Park Avenue? We seem to have a couple of different plans for that.
Yep. So, what was included, so originally, gosh, I'm having a hard time finding it. Here we go. So, what was included originally in the plan? If you, if you have the plan in front of you, you can jump to page-
Eight.
Twenty-three.
Eight and 23. Those both sound right for different reasons. So, eight is the preferred alternative specified within the plan, and that is a small plaza at the intersection of Park and West. And it's intended to be sort of along that lateral sort of field of view for Park Avenue. But if you look at the plan view that's in the upper right of that page, you'll see that the green space is maintained. So, the plaza is really limited to that lower right corner of that entire area. If you contrast that with the concepts on page 23, pages 23 and 24, you'll see that same plaza exists in the same location, but attached to it is either a pavilion or the historic structure. All of those ideas were considered, and various members of the community said they liked those ideas, or they liked concepts within them, but the broad consensus wasn't there. It wasn't sufficient to get it to the preferred alternative level. So, that's why the small plaza is what's included on page eight, which is the main part of the plan. It's also what's included in the cost estimates.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a quick question about that. I kind of liked the other ones, the unpreferred alternatives. Would going with this preferred alternative do anything to make it difficult to adopt one of the other alternatives down the road, or are they compatible?
They are compatible. And again, if you look at pages 23 and 24, the plaza stays in the same place. It's just a question of what you connect to it. The preferred alternative is to connect green space to it. Further down the road, if community interests or values change, it's possible to retrofit.
And then, I also had a question about the, the Crossman Trail. One part is, you would split off from the current trail before the fire station, heading east?
Sure. You're talking about where does it tie into the WNOD?
Yeah, I'm just wondering, like, there's the crushed stone path in Crossman, but there's also on the other side of Washington through the fire station.
Yes. So, south of the fire station, whoop, there it goes. South of the fire station, there is a gravel trail here. That's the existing condition. That would have to be changed to a paved surface and widened out to meet those, those WNOD standards.
Right. And then, there's no chance, I probably, we don't have the property, but there's no chance to split the bike path before you go down Gresham Place, because there's already a bridge there. You don't have to build another bridge. You don't have to ride on the sidewalk. You know what I'm saying? Like, if you came across Washington and you could get over to the bike thing.
There is, on the north side of four-mile run, immediately, there's a fire access lane that, the, I think it's the Wesley property, which is actually in Arlington County. And part of their site plan actually has a fire access lane that could be double-purposed and used as a portion of the bike trail. Those two things would be not incompatible.
Okay. So, coordinate them. Yeah, because that would seem smarter. We wouldn't have to build a little bridge. You'd keep people on their bikes off of that sidewalk down Gresham, so. That'd be a good thing to give, give a try. Those are my other questions.
Anyone else? Anyone? We're going to talk about plazas in just a minute. I'm kind of concerned that we have too many plazas cooking here, and none of them are ever going to get done, because more plazas equals no plazas. And I'm not sure about the lighting, but it's okay. Anyone? Do we need the motion? No, I've let it go.
Yeah, just, I've got a question on lighting.
Yes.
Herndon is the only place that has lighting at, at this point?
Herndon's the only place that has sort of urbanized lighting. Arlington has lighting along most of their section of the trail already. They have a slightly more rural feel because they've got more of a setback.
Okay. Because I always thought the idea of lighting would be very important.
Arlington's not lit. Arlington's lit from Columbia Pike south into Sherrington, but when you're going north up Columbia Pike, that's dark.
It starts, it's light off right after you cross 29.
No, up through Bon Air, it's dark. It's not lit.
I think it's lit.
No, it's not lit, I'm sure.
Through the connection with Custis Trail, I believe there is lighting.
Go get us a report on it.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Yes.
If I could, just speaking to the Herndon lighting example, city staff, early on in this planning effort, we, we did go out and talk to the Herndon staff about their experience with lighting. And they said that they went through a little bit of sort of community heartbreak and worry and heartache, that, you know, is the lighting really going to work? Are you going to be able to shade it from polluting? They went through a lot of demonstrations to demonstrate before the fact that it was going to work, and then after the fact, they went in. They did have to make a few minor modifications and tweaks, but at the end of the day, they were able to satisfy that, that light pollution requirement.
I think that's the consensus.
Oh, can we use their lessons learned?
Absolutely.
Because I, when I saw that, I thought that was a, just a great idea. It makes everything more useful, be able to use.
I'm willing to make a motion. Whereas, the Washington and Old Dominion Railroad Regional Park, WNOD, is one of the largest park spaces in the city and offers tremendous opportunities for enhancing quality of life within the city of Falls Church. And whereas the WNOD Park Master Plan, the city's greenest street incorporates and advances policy and design goals identified in the city's Comprehensive Plan and other master plans, like increasing transportation mode choice, better connecting the city's park system, and treating the WNOD as one of the city's great streets. And whereas the WNOD Park Master Plan identifies grant funding sources that can dramatically reduce the cost of developing the city's portion of the WNOD. Now, therefore, I move that the Planning Commission of the City of Falls Church, Virginia, recommend city, recommend to city council to adopt the WNOD Park Master Plan, the city's greenest streets, as a vision and guide for developing the city's portion of the WNOD. I further move that the city seek strategic land acquisition opportunities contiguous to the WNOD Regional Park that can provide additional recreational and cultural amenities or natural areas easily accessed by the public.
I'll second it.
Motion moved and seconded. Any comments?
I'm concerned about how we're going to pay for it, but I love the ideas.
We'll do a referendum.
If you can get it funded, it sort of makes all of the questions kind of disappear. Ms. G.
Ms. Hockenberry.
Yes.
Mr. Meeks.
Yes.
Mr. Rankin.
Yes.
Ms. Rogers?
Yes.
Ms. Tease?
Yes.
Mr. Bodeska?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay. And see, look at that. We did that in under 15 minutes. You can do it. You can do it. Unless somebody's got something else, motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Motion to adjourn moved and seconded. We are adjourned, and I think we'll just stay up here unless you, because do we have to keep filming? That's why we have been staying up here.
Part of it is so we can keep filming, so the community can see your discussion on the CIP. It is easier that I can easily access documents to bring up, which I can't if I'm sitting up there. So, I'd request you stay at the dais.
So, we're, which we're happy to do, and you don't have to answer this question because it's really a Mr. Snyder question. I'm not trying to be controversial. So, we kept filming when we were doing Mason Row. Will there ever be a time that we quit filming when we go to a, a work session? Or would those days are just, it's okay?
Those, I think, are a policy question for the Planning Commission, the Planning Director.
Well, it just-
It's not a requirement. It's just a community benefit.
All right. So, another retreat item. Okay. Take it away.
So, we are in work session, and what I'd like to do is on the memo, under item number 1B, little Roman number two, is the second part of the Department and Projects description. We have the staff resources available to go through those. And in particular, I'd like to start with the library, as we do have Library Board of Trustees members here this evening. And we'll just work staff through and commissioners to answer questions. Once we get through library, the public parking on Park Avenue, transportation, and match funding money, then we'll go to side two and do the follow-up items under number three from the last work session. So, with that, if that's acceptable, Chair, then I'd like to draw your attention to the library project, which is under tab six, on six dash one. And this is submitted as the Library Board of Trustees adopted and recommended for funding starting in FY '18, to do the more detailed design and engineering plans to follow up on the feasibility study and the more detailed design that you all were commenting on earlier. The dollar amount in the basic design has not changed. The two options of east and west are still there as part of the community deliberation process. And then, this would be calling for a referendum this fall.
Oh, okay, okay.
Separately from that, then I will talk about the parking garage and the additional study from that. But I'd like to open it up to any comments and questions from the Planning Commission. And while you do that, I'm going to get a second microphone.
I think we got nothing on the library, because we've seen this, as we just discussed. You saw the whole thing. We talked about it. I don't know how many years we've seen this, but it feels like six or something, five. Many. So, I don't think we have.
First, the library takes 17, the school's update.
I would support you in that, Ms. Rogers. I think we're good. Library, good.
All right. Well, then, we will move on to the public parking on Park Avenue, which we know is of importance to the community, as well as the Library Board of Trustees. And so, that is on page six dash three, I believe. Six dash three is the Park Avenue public parking structure, and that is an item we started talking about last year as part of ensuring we have adequate parking around the sort of City Hall, Community Center, Library campus, as well as the expansion to the library, which is in the project we just spoke to. It was approved to have funding 3.4 in FY '17 last year. You will see in the CIP that's before you this year, that same dollar amount is still in the CIP, but I have proposed for it to be in 2021 in the out year, to allow us time to look at whether alternative, more affordable options could be fruitful. And as part of the adoption last year, council did ask for us to do some additional study into public parking. And so, you'll find directly after six dash three, the shared parking analysis report from the consultants, that foursquare that we have used on the citywide TDM study, the previous City Hall parking campus study in February of 2015. And then, this one supplements it. What they did was a detailed parking count of our public streets and commercial office buildings, and which ones were studied or outlined in the full report that you have included in its entirety. Page three of the report- Page three of the report highlights the key results. And they do believe that additional 10 permanent off-street parking spaces are needed to meet the expanded needs of the library, and this is based on existing conditions here and research on other library expansion. That 10 assumes that the seven that are behind the library remain. If the option was chosen where those then are not available, then it would be 17. During the construction of the two-story parking deck behind City Hall, then we would need 20 additional spots during that construction because what's there now would be unavailable. And they noted that as part of their study, there's 184 parking spaces available on private commercial entities, and at no time in the Saturday peak, farmer's market time, and the Tuesday peak, court, library story time, was more than 65% of these parking spaces utilized. That's what left 184 available spaces. And then they've done a detailed review of other localities and states where shared parking has been used, and that's summarized in here. But they feel that pursuing a shared leased space, a more organized parking, mini parking district, doing it as a assessment as to whether this could work in this district would be a recommended approach. If you turn to page 40, I lost my page. I thought I had it marked while you all were deliberating. Yes, on page 41, you will see under that section potential shared parking locations, the four locations they would recommend that the city pursue as an initial shared parking agreements. And these are within 180 feet away from City Hall and the library. And research shows that 800 feet is the, a good distance for professional services and grocery stores, which are most similar to libraries. There's not a lot of studies on libraries, but thinking about people carrying their groceries, bagging, doing different errands, the grocery store was a similar comparison of 800 feet. And so there's four properties that are within that threshold and also have available parking that they would propose we could do, which would be a more affordable approach than building a parking structure initially. Three thirteen and 200 Little Falls are the two commercial properties we've already had dialogue of partnership on. Three hundred, three thirteen Park Avenue was, of course, one right next to the library where we had approached the shared parking concept originally in terms of the structure. 200 Little Falls has been a regular business that we dialogue with because we have a lot of farmer's market in court, spill over parking there. So that is in a high-level summary of the parking study. And based on that study and research, the staff recommendation then is to pursue that immediately because we have current parking needs as well as when we do construction here and we do construction at the library, and push a actual parking structure out into the out year of the C I P so we can assess those other options. The concept being pursuing a parking solution versus a parking garage. And I'll be glad to entertain any questions, and I have.
Well.
Mike's still here, who assisted in the parking study with me.
Who assisted in the parking study?
Mike Collins.
Mrs. Stoddard and Mr. Collins were the two staff that worked with me.
I, um, I understand this study. And I had seen this study, and it was the reason that I was not wild about our parking reduction. Because I'm not sure that I completely accept this study in its entirety. Because I think one of the things that I picked up from this study is we have an on-street parking, which we did not address in our latest memo, and we're never going to get to for another however many years. But it's fine. I understand. 3.4 million dollars is a lot for a parking garage, so we can keep working on it.
I'd like to hear from the library as to how they feel about this. Because we were very enthusiastic about the parking structure and getting, even getting it in place before the library started their construction. So I'd like to hear from the library on this.
I have done one briefing with them, and they have seen in the C I Ps. I'll defer to the director or any board members that would like to comment. I gave them the fastest briefing you've ever seen on a snow night because they were kind enough to try to get it done quickly and let everybody go home.
Well, let's see. If the economics work, it certainly sounds like it would be a nice option rather than going for a very expensive garage. We do worry about what this might do in terms of us holding a referendum in the next few months because we'd have to tell the public that it isn't a settled issue yet. If the public ask us, well, are you asking us to fund a library renovation and expansion without knowing whether we're going to also be putting in a garage? We'd have to say, yes, we don't quite know the linkage yet. But overall, if the economics did work, we think it would be a very nice option to pursue.
And to that point, because that's a valid concern, the city manager has directed me to start immediately trying to work on these shared agreements so we'd have one, if not two or more, in place at the time of that, because currently, you know, there's peak times where we have parking issues. And as part of the survey, I would call your attention to question six, which is on seven and 19. And 57% of the respondents supported pursuing shared parking as a solution.
But this was only 2% of the population.
Of the survey respondents.
Well, so, so it's a two-part question. Does this affect the referendum? I mean, that's sort of a rhetorical question. But are you confident? Well, one of the challenges with this report is some of these, these, this parking is just silly. So it's like some of it on Park Avenue is too far away for the library to use. That building is, you know, right now 40% vacant. Theoretically, it's not always 40% vacant. I mean, it's, this report is just, all right, so never mind.
So I had a, my question was with the parking garage idea. I mean, the, the C I P page notes that it still wasn't clear what ongoing costs of using the air rights or maintaining, like, we didn't know that. So to me, one of the, last year when we looked at this, that was my question. It's like, okay, so we've got this money from the water sale. We can spend that on that. But we don't, we hadn't worked out a deal. Is it going to cost us a million dollars a year to rent this there? I mean, so we are, are we any closer on knowing that? I mean, that, to me, that is critical because if we, if we can rent the spaces that exist now on the ground next week for the same cost that we'd be spending on renting the space that we're going to spend $3 million bucks on it, then it seems like a no-brainer just to rent the spaces that are there now, but we don't know what that, we didn't ever work out a deal on the.
Did not pursue the air rights and the construction piece because it was much more complicated in terms of relocating them during construction and keeping their parking until this part was done because council, when they adopted the C I P, directed that alternative options be pursued.
So we don't, yeah, so we don't know.
I have an answer to that question.
And then my other question is, because this is water sale money, right? And so we pushed it out to 2021. It was like a fiscal question. Does that money just sit in some no-interest rate checking account for that time? But I guess the other question I have is, does that increase the chances that between now and 2021, we decide to actually just spend that money on something else? Do we, do we worry about that? You know what I mean? Because this is.
The, it would stay in the designated capital reserve as all dedicated projects that are cash. So, example, the Big Chimneys, that one million is sitting designated in a reserve. It is in a low-interest-bearing account, you know, because it's readily accessible. It's not doing much, not that the market's doing much. It would be in the adopted C I P if this five-year was approved. It is in the out year, so it's not actually appropriated. And so at any point, a decision could be made to use it elsewhere. Until it's in the first year of the C I P, that's the only year it's actually appropriated to the project. Otherwise, as Big Chimneys has been, it's a planning.
Yeah, and then, so my, I mean, my personal feeling is it seemed like this was the sort of project that if we ever did decide, yes, we want to build the parking deck, that it could get going pretty quickly. And so I'd be inclined to try this alternative solution. And if it works well, then maybe we never have to come back and build a deck. And if it's not working well, then maybe next year we say, okay, let's move this back up because it turns out it doesn't work to rent parking spaces around there. So I, I like this idea of trying to just put, keep this on the books for down the road in case we want to build it then or move it up, but in the meantime, try using spaces that are already there.
If it stays in the C I P, then it kind of messages that that money is set aside for that intended purpose. The other option is to not show it at all, and it'll go back into the undesignated water sale capital reserve.
And get spent immediately.
Cindy. Why did you move it all the way out to 2021 as opposed to just another year? When you, when you would have the, after a year, you would know if the rented parking was going to work.
For two reasons. One, we did one of, a good, solid year plus of it testing so we could try through all seasons and stuff, but probably more importantly was to allow the City Hall parking deck to be constructed so we'd have the net additional 44 spots operational for a good year so we could see how the whole campus area was operating with the streets. You'll notice in the report, Public Works resigned and opened up some additional parking spots. So we wanted that, the leased shared parking, and then the additional 44 spots on this campus to be available to see how it changed.
And when is, when is the City Hall parking going to start and be finished?
The construction is scheduled to be FY 2017 with construction done in 2019. And we're still working with the A and E firms for the actual phasing of when stuff would be built, garage first or last, but by 19, theoretically, everything would be done and we wouldn't have construction equipment repeating some parking spots. And so I was working from a 2019 end of construction and then a good year of operation. And FY 21 will be July 2020 to 21, so it's about a year after City Hall. Theoretically, it's done.
I don't like to see this moved out.
Yeah, I don't like that it's been almost entirely de-linked from the library at this point. I always felt like that was an important part of that proposal. I'm not sure where you move it and how these numbers change if it gets moved closer to the library financing, but this seems like it's really far out for something that seemed important for the library expansion.
Part of the study indicated that the library could expand without a parking structure. But we do need a parking solution, and staff is proposing that the shared leased parking approach is a viable one based on seeing what's available for parking. It's just not organized. It's not permitted to be parked. And one of the things that you would have is a legal agreement so there wasn't towing if you walked off one property to go to another so you could park once, do more. And it also, one of the recommendations I didn't highlight, but it does require good wayfinding, signage, and marking on the website so people know it's public parking.
I mean, I don't have a problem with the, the, these agreements, the shared parking agreements. That part, that part of the proposal seems really reasonable to me. I just don't like that this has been pushed out so far, where, you know, it's, it's, again, totally dealing from the library at this point. We're sort of assessing everything for long durations of time before investing in this garage. I mean, even if you fund it in 2021, it takes time to build and, and your, the situation is just sort of, it, it seems like an odd place to put this money so many years after the $7 million is going to be spent in 2019.
Particularly since, you know, we have the money. It's not like we have to fund it. It's there. And the parking garage is a permanent solution and not a stopgap measure.
And that, you know, the E D A also has on their work plan to look at a holistic parking management kind of plan. So part of it is also, is that the right, is a good location for the library? But if we can meet the parking needs in other ways, is there a better place for a parking structure for the city? So all of that was in the deliberations, but the 2021 was predominantly so that we could have the City Hall parking deck done and additional 44 spots available here to see how it changed the dynamics. If less people were parking on the street because they could park in this campus and there'd be closer parking to the library, for example.
But didn't you know last year when we moved this into the year that we moved it to, that the parking, City Hall parking was going to go ahead, everything was going to be the same? I mean, what's changed?
I think the study with knowing what additional available parking, 184 spaces within this campus area is confirmed to be available on two different parking times. And then the additional research that was done by the consultants, where, where shared leased parking has been successful in other places and what kind of instruments and tools we could use to achieve that, comparing that cost-effectiveness to the parking garage, all of that fed into the decisions, which I didn't have last year when we were discussing achieving a parking solution for the library. We started it out with generating a good conversation around the structure.
Well, unfortunately, I can't support moving it out that far.
You know, the, the, the one aspect of this is there's, I think this is, everyone keeps suggesting that, that we're going to find some place where we're going to build good public parking. You know, I, literally, I've been part of that discussion for, I think, 16 years now. So, I mean, like, at what point do we just say, oh, let's just build it here? Maybe there is a magical parking place that will be magic. I don't know.
I did come up with a question. Exactly for the 313 or, which is it, the 311 that we now use? Which of these properties is right next to, to the library?
313 Park Avenue is the.
I know we've made, I know you've made contact with the people there about possibility of garage. In those conversations, have you discussed how many parking spots that we might be able to get to share?
Didn't talk about a shared leased parking specifically at that point. We were talking about the two-story deck and so that, and that concept, we'd get the whole 55 on top. They were expecting to keep everything that they have now. My understanding is that they are informally collaborating with the library on the row of parking most closely to the library.
Right, that whole low, that whole row down there.
More than six, but I don't remember. 10, about 10 spots.
And would that be sufficient, kind of?
That seems to be what the consultants recommend is the minimum. But looking at the patron study and just some of our peak demand, I, I would not pursue doing the bare minimum. I'd try to increase that parking opportunity. Also, looking at 200 Little Falls, which is still pretty close to the library, but if that was more used for court and other City Hall users, it could open up street parking towards the library.
Since we've already had some conversations with them, it would seem like that would be able to go a little bit faster.
I think 313 and 200 Little Falls, where both have been talking either compensation on their building in lieu of their, the parking structure, or in 200 Little Falls, they actually were talking about trying to have a, a financial agreement for us to use. I think both of those will move quicker. 120, 123 Little Falls is the Christian Science Reading Room, and it's always underutilized. It's just not as clearly marked and connected to stuff. So the first two, I would start with 313 and 200 Little Falls, which have a fair amount of available spots even during the peak.
And they would be marked as public parkings.
That would be, yeah, part of the discussion. And basically, the research shows they get marked as public, and you have a lease payment per year, and we would pay anything that was above normal wear and tear maintenance. Those terms would have to be worked out.
Okay. Well, so when would the referendum theoretically be on the library?
If the lib, if the library stays in the current schedule of FY 18, and you all didn't indicate any intent to change that, then it would be this fall, the 16th, 2016.
You know, as I remember, in a lot of discussions, we were getting a lot of pushback on that parking garage. A lot, a lot of negative.
A lot of the negative feedback was, number one, the quest for the magic parking space that benefits every person who ever drove through the city. And number two was the question about sort of. And number two was the question about sort of the bang for the buck, as it were.
Right, right.
And I think number two was sort of a more worthwhile question than number one. So we'll, well, okay, maybe we come back to this next Monday and maybe we move this up to reflect more when the referendum. Seems to me that you can't let the parking issue hurt the referendum. That would be my.
I agree with that.
But it may hurt it if it's.
Well, but it would be.
It's combined with the library.
But could you say that in the event? It could be accelerated. That could be part of the referendum.
I would say it'd be more negative reaction to the.
Well, no, because we, you're not committing as part of the referendum to build it. You're committing, if you have a problem, once the library is built, that you would build it sooner than twenty twenty-one.
The planning commission will see me again next year, so you can always reevaluate the year of the funding.
So is the proposal then on the parking for, I mean, we're going to spend eight million dollars on the library? The referendum is going to say, we're using street parking and some other spots on some temporary agreement? I mean, I don't know what that, I don't know what that referendum says about parking on a structure you're spending so much money on.
The actual referendum and the wording that's on the ballot is very narrow to the financing and the dollar amount for the expansion of the library. What's more important is the messaging that goes around it and the community outreach by the library board of trustees and the city as a whole in terms of addressing the expansion, the rationale, the why, the plumbing, the ADA, all of that. Plus how we'd be addressing the parking. The idea would be is we'd move expeditiously on this shared parking. So at the point in which they're really out there this summer messaging the project, we could say we have shared parking arrangements at X and Y available to the library.
Okay.
That would be the best thing to have.
People's parking concerns now with or without the expansion of the library.
But we could be prepare, okay, I understand. Okay.
So at this point, I'll leave it, the CIP as presented to you all. And then Monday, if you need to adjust the motion, we can do that. Unless by the end of the evening, you give me a different direction because I'm coming back to the question about motions.
Well, you know, one question you could answer for us as specifically as possible is how, is how executable these agreements for parking are? And so to, to give a specific example, two hundred Little Falls, it seems to me we sort of have an informal agreement because that's farmer's market parking and I'm sure we've, I know we've worked that out. It seems to me that two hundred Little Falls is really not that helpful for library parking. Unless it's maybe employee parking or something like that that, that helps.
Yeah, the only thing I think, if it, if it pulls somebody off of park or currently parks on park that's going to city hall. But no one's going to park at two hundred Little Falls and walk to the library.
Yeah.
Just park on North Virginia.
So I think we just need, I just think we need a little bit more actual understand, somebody needs to understand the, the detail of this a little bit better.
But to be clear, I mean, and if you don't, you know, if you don't trust the report, then you don't trust the report. But it calls for eleven spots. There's, I counted them on the side. There's thirteen right adjacent to the lot. So if you just get the deal with three thirteen park, that, according to the study, gets you what you need for the library. So I don't, I, I, I am curious about how executable those are. I'm also curious how executable the air rights thing would be for the garage, since we never actually went down that path. But, but it does seem like for the library needs, there's parts right, spots right there. If you get that deal done, two hundred is a nice for the city hall stuff. It's probably not all that relevant to the library.
Two hundred would handle farmer's market and courts and three thirteen would do the library. Both buildings, I've been in conversation with, three thirteen wasn't specifically shared agreements, but it obviously was around financial contributions for the parking structure and what else they would like for the air rights, as Mr. Rankin identified. Two hundred Little Falls, we've actually had specific dollar amount conversations because they would like some compensation for us using their parking. So I think they'd be pretty open to furthering that discussion.
Okay. Thank you.
Downtown Public Plaza.
Yep. We do that and then that'll roll into transportation as well. So on, thank you all very much. So we do have Mr. Rankin and Mr. Goff here to talk about the follow-up on the downtown Public Plaza. And then following that, we'll finish out the transportation projects with the other staff that are here. On page two of the memo under three A, little Roman numeral one, I listed in a high level some of the issues and questions that you all raised last time in terms of, is this the right location? The timing of it? What about the mid-block crossing? The design issues with or without the alley and the transformer and then site plan requirements. I will note on that one in particular, and then I'll turn it over for a dialogue between you all and the EDA, is that Mr. Schneider did look at the site plan and it would be something based on the current concepts that have been discussed. That will be a formal site plan before the planning commission. So you would indeed be seeing it as it, its design and details developed. So with that, would you like to ask your questions or sort of get a report back based on the questions you had last time? How would you like that dialogue to occur?
Thank you for coming. You know, I think the question that I had is the, is the question that a lot of this stuff. So we're, I think we're sort of generally approving this. But I'm not really sure what we're approving because of the transformer, the mid-block crossing, et cetera, et cetera. So maybe if we know what we just approved or what we just got into, that would be the most helpful for me. Unless everybody understands this but me.
And let me, the EDA had a specific grant condition that they adopted. They kind of spelled out their expectations. Do you want to speak to that?
Sure.
I do have it in your notebook. I just need to find the page number for that.
Thank you. So the EDA has been working hard at this for many meetings over a long period of time. I will keep it as brief as possible and answer any questions you have. But basically, we spent some money to have some plans drawn up. And we worked with Parks and Recreation, with city council at a work session, with the CACT. And there's been a lot of support. And in particular, there was option three among the sketches that were drawn by the professionals. That everybody, that was the consensus, was the preferred plan. There's an option for with the alleyway and an option for if we cannot obtain the rights to the alleyway. Contained in those plans, there's sort of an A and a B. And what the EDA has approved, I believe it was unanimously, to use up to five hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the EDA's funds towards building this, which we believe is more than sufficient amount to build it.
And I did find the page in your CIP notebook that references that specific vote. And that would be tab nine and it's nine dash seven. So it lays out the money and then sort of the, that is the preferred option and then completed within twenty-four months, et cetera.
I just have one, I have a question. It's not exactly CIP, but it, but it is related. I just, I guess what I'm trying to determine is how can we pull out up to five hundred and fifty thousand dollars from a land baking fund to spruce up this park area? I mean, isn't by definition a land baking fund a fund that we should be using to buy commercial property to help increase development in the city?
That's a great question. As you know, the EDA has this fund that has money in it. The EDA is allowed to use it for land baking or for other purposes that support economic development in the city. We unanimously believed that this achieves that goal, goes towards that goal. Not only that, the EDA has worked hard over the last two years to work with city staff to identify potential opportunities to use the land baking funds for land baking. First of all, it's not a gigantic amount of money in terms of land baking significant parcel.
What percentage of, of the funds that you currently have in the land baking account is this? Like, do you have two million dollars and we're using twenty-five percent?
There was a total of about one point eight million from the sale of the former Bedolnic site.
Right.
And it's just five hundred and fifty of that.
So this is a substantial percentage of our land baking fund going to do this park?
About thirty percent.
Yeah, okay.
I just wanted to say, the opportunities for land baking, while we still encourage them and we are open to them, they're few and far between.
I personally, in the last year and a half, I've seen multiple commercial properties come on that were adjacent to property we owned, that were in locations that we have in our comp plan for potential development, redevelopment in the future. There's been lots of pieces of property. But, so I guess I'm just, I'm not really for this project because I don't think this is what, I don't think it's what I expect to be used with land baking funds. And I don't think a lot of citizens I've talked to expect land baking funds to be used for this. Especially because they look at what we were able to do with the Bedolnic property and getting a fairly good development there. And has anyone actually looked at what kind of economic development in, in dollars that you would expect or estimate of what you expect to get from this? Because currently, I mean, I've been to that property plenty of times. I've sat on that wall eating an ice cream cone. I'm just not sure that if it was prettier, that I would go buy more ice cream or, or go to the Chinese restaurant more often.
It's very.
And, and I, I, I mean, even losing four parking spots there kind of upsets me because I usually do get the park there if I want to, but it's not always that easy.
I appreciate your concern. It's, it's really hard to put a number on it, on that economic impact of making this plaza that is very overgrown and underutilized to a gorgeous plaza that we think will really attract families. It could have concerts or, you know.
Do you know, you've been to it. It's not that big.
Right, but by, by using the parking spaces, it increases the, the.
The length a little bit.
Area of it significantly.
I, I just point out, because a lot of people pointed out that the Mason Square Plaza was very small and how would we get much done there? And this is smaller than that plaza. It's, it's smaller than the area in front of like Mad Fox that we close off. It, this, and it, and there will not be more sun there just because we make it pretty because of the way it's located. So I just, you know, I just want to point out that, like I said, I don't, I just don't think I'm going to go buy more ice cream because there's a prettier place to sit. I can currently have no problem sitting on the wall there, but.
Well, let me.
I, I hope for the best for it.
But before you sort of address that, I mean, one of the things that I've really been wrestling with is we are, Mr. Stoddard has us absolutely swimming in plazas. We, we have plazas, we have plazas upon plazas. And a lot of those are too small, could be expanded on, just on the W and O D. You saw he's, I don't know whether six plazas he's got going on there. Some of those, five, some of those would, you would not necessarily buy commercial land, but you could pick up a residential house that come on the market that's immediately adjoining. Costs about five hundred and fifty thousand. You know, there are, there are innumerable opportunities for plazas. And so I'm sort of interested in how, how this one rose to the top.
Great. I love this question.
Let me also say that one of my challenges is, this is a lovely plan. This is probably not what's going to get built unless the transformer can be moved. Everyone loves the plan without the alley, but the alley probably has to stay. Well, okay, we want the alley. I mean, I'm just, I feel like there's kind of a lot of problems with this. And if we were to, if we had a plaza task force and Mr. Stoddard would come back with, I'm guessing, what would that be? Thirty-six potential plaza locations? I don't know. This is our top, or I, maybe it is. Maybe it is our top choice. But it doesn't feel like that as this has evolved. So, so just help us out of this.
Yeah. Well, first on the transformer. The transformer would not affect the renderings in any significant way, is my understanding. The transformer can be screened. It can be turned into an art project. It's not a big impediment. It would actually save us money if we can't move the transformer. So I, I really don't care whether we can move the transformer or not.
I've always preferred to leave the transformer there, put some bushes around or build sun over it.
Save a hundred thousand dollars.
Because it's a credible chunk of money just to move that thing.
Well, actually, the plan, so we heard last time that the plan is significantly different with the, than what we're seeing with the big old transformer there. Because we asked that question last time, when will we know if the transformer can be moved? And the answer is like when it's under construction.
Right. The answer, that's the same answer I got. I wasn't here for the last.
Which is fine, which is fine.
I want to go to your, your broader question about why this plaza. This actually came about in a walking tour with some city staff and with city council probably about two years ago, where we were walking on downtown and looking at improvements and what's there and what could be done. And people are like, wow. Some people didn't know that that park was there because it is so dark and underutilized and overgrown. And it's basically just a bed of dirt and mulch and leaves. Melissa's ice cream notwithstanding. But the ice cream hasn't, well, there was frozen yogurt before there was ice cream, I guess. But the difference between this plaza and any of those other plazas is that it's downtown. This has a different, so this is right in the heart of the city where the city is already changing and investing. Number one is we're investing in the, the lights and the lighting and the streetscape there in general, right? We're investigating in street furniture, I believe, in terms of benches and bike racks and things.
But, but let me stop you there because what's interesting to me about this specific plaza is it immediately abutted by two of the most difficult owners in the city of Falls Church. The, you have picked the two most likely sellers or redevelopers of their property in my lifetime. And that's where you're putting the plaza. You're not going immediately adjacent a property that something's about to get going and it's very sexy. You've chosen literally the, the, the dark horse candidate to never be redeveloped, ever.
Fair point, but the difference is we didn't choose this plaza. It chose us. It's already there and looks like crap, for lack of a better word.
Okay.
We don't have to wait for somebody else to say, here's some land or here, we're going to develop, but we'll give you this open space and you guys can control it and do it. Because we've seen that happen in other places and it's not happening, right? This already exists and it's where, it's across the street from Harris Teeter. It's near the state theater. It's near the restaurants. Andy's employees are going to hang out there and drink coffee with their, you know, hips or bicycles and stuff all the time. My employees are going to go there. It's the location and the fact that it already exists. And it's not like land that we have to find to make a plaza.
Okay.
That's the difference.
Okay.
I have a couple of comments. One is just sort of the awkward thing. It's the EDA's money and, you know, I mean, I guess it's all of our money in some ways. So I'm torn how to, how to, how I feel about whether or not we should have a bunch of opinion about how the EDA spends their money. But related to that, I mean, I do have, I, I do have this sort of nagging thing. It's up to five hundred and fifty. You don't move the transformer, saves some money. Presumably, if you don't get the alley, you probably save some money because there's less land to work with. It'd be easier if, in my mind, it's like, hey, the transformer is there, which is not horrible but not as cool. And the alley stays there. So instead of five hundred and fifty, it's like three hundred or something. Then I'd be like, oh, that's, that sounds cool. But if it's five hundred and fifty and the transformer doesn't move and the alley is still there, that to me doesn't, I mean, I know it's not, like, that doesn't seem great. And I know that's not how the plan is to go. So I, I, it'd be easier for me if I'm like, hey, it's this exact thing for this exact amount of money. But I will say this, and I hate the personal anecdotes because everyone's got them and what did they matter? But my office is across the street and I do go to like Pizano's or local market and I get lunch. And I'm like, I don't want to go back to the office because it's nice outside. I don't want to sit down and eat somewhere. Pizano's has a little table out there, but sometimes someone's in there. There's literally no place to go. Like, I wander around with time thinking like, where could I sit and not look like a bum and eat my sandwich?
You have places to sit inside Mason Square and your little plaza.
There's, sort of. I mean, there's like slanted things. So I, I do think there is a lack of community space down there. And I know that Rob, there's only a certain number of plazas that can exist in Rob's world. And so maybe this is. in Rob's world, and so maybe this isn't one for him, but it's, it is, to me, it's apples and oranges to some, you know, plaza on the bike trail, which is just sort of an intersection with the road. I mean, it's, it's a, it's a functional thing. So I'm a little bit torn on the money and what you would get for the money not necessarily knowing it, but, but I, you know, it's land we own now, it's totally underutilized. There is actually a lot of stuff around there and more stuff going up that would, would sort of work with that. You know, my personal dream would be to have that, every time I jaywalk across Route 7 right there, I think, oh, if there's a mid-block crossing here, that'd be great. So I don't, I know that's not in scope.
We explored that a little bit, but that's, has a lot of other complications.
Yeah, so, but maybe if we built this thing, it would, it would encourage us to keep exploring that. Because, and not just there, because I think if we established a standard pedestrian mid-block crossing technique, we could use it in three or four places along Broad Street, get the drivers used to it, it would be super effective with all the downtown stuff. So, anyway, so I, you know, I, you know, it's not my favorite project.
Hope this spurs that discussion and activity, absolutely.
If you told me it's 300 grand, if you don't move the transformer, you don't have the alley, or, or 550, and we definitely can do those and other things, I would say like, eh, it's your money, I don't know if I'd spend it that way, but I would like this.
And I, I would just say, like, if it was 100,000, you were just going to put some patios and tables in there, I'd be fine with it. But I'm, it, it's a dark area, and taken, if, even if you kill the two large trees there, it's still going to be dark between those, that area. I don't think there's, we, we had lots of things grow in there. You keep saying it's overgrown. It's not, it's empty. Everything died there but the two trees, because there's no light.
But they're giant, the two trees. But I think you were out of town for at least one of the big presentations we had on it, where, I mean, you keep saying it's dark, but there are many, many little plazas like this in Manhattan that are, have 20-story skyscrapers next to them, and they're beautiful and vibrant and bright, because it...
Well, I've actually seen presentations on this. I saw the EDA, when, I was there for the EDA's first discussions. I've seen at least five presentations. I think I'm pretty covered. No, the reason I say it's dark is because we, since we start talking about this in the last two years, I've really paid attention to it. Because I, I'm not joking, we do sometimes sit there and eat ice cream, and then when we do like the Halloween painting, that's where the paint station is. And so I've spent some time in it, and it's pretty much is dark all the time there because of the way the buildings are. Now, you're right, it could be vibrant if you guys put some lights in there. I'm just not sure 30% of our land banking fund should go there. And let me just say, it's not the EDA's money, that the, EDA has that money because we sold public land that was bought with public funds. It is the citizens' money that's in trust to the EDA to use for land banking, or as you said, some other kind of economic development.
Yeah, I trust the EDA.
But, so if it was a, if it was a cheaper proposal and we were going to, those beds there are dead, we should patio them and put some tables on, then I'd be fine. But I just don't, there's not enough room there for some big public event, but there is room there for some public seating. That, that's just my feeling.
Well, if I might, as liaison to the EDA, I've been following this quite, quite closely. And I do see this as part of the downtown area that we're really trying to spruce up because it, you couldn't, first of all, you couldn't just put chairs and everything. The roots are, the roots are all crazy under those trees. But I, I think that the EDA has really studied this, and it's something that they're quite passionate about. I, I happen to like it because I do think that we do need all that sprucing up, we need, you know, to pay attention to our beds down there and everything, and just, I think it would be a great addition to that area.
I have a quick question. What about the entrance to the Unity Club? Is that going to be preserved so that people who belong to that particular club can enter and exit easily?
I would presume so. I don't, I think, I mean, there's a side entrance to that building. I don't see how you could not make that accessible and incorporate that into the plan.
Well, it's, it's a pretty active area. It's an active entrance, and I just want to make sure that there's no impediment to its use. I mean, I don't see any on here. I mean, I, almost everything here is paved except this little bit of lawn, so, and some bushes and trees, but it seems to me that there would be a sidewalk or something, so this club can continue to function.
I, I think that this is the doormat here and that there is, you know, sidewalk and entrance, and, and the, from the top view, you know, it's hard to see exactly how much open space there is. From an angle at eye level, I think you would see that the tree canopy, you know, is a little bit above eye level and it's much more open, and you would see the entrance on the side, but I don't have those other perspectives in the drawing that I have.
And my, my other question is, all this seating here, this isn't for the restaurants on each side, this is just public seating. It wouldn't be...
Correct.
...limited to the restaurants.
That would be worked out by the city, I believe, as, as it goes forward.
And I think the intent was probably to have both, and Mr. Goff can clarify for me, so you have, blue color would be public and red would be private seating that would be arranged with the restaurants, probably in exchange for some maintenance and some kind of partnership.
And the manager of the new place came, came to the meeting, he was very enthusiastic about it.
And so he's willing to pay for that area to have his seating there?
They loved the idea of having the potential of seating.
Oh, I bet they did, yeah.
We did not discuss, you know, what kind of an arrangement there would be.
Well, they used to have seating on the sidewalk, so, you know, I, I just think since it's a public place to create partic, you know, we're talking about using public money for a plaza, for a park, and, and to have a section of it reserved for a restaurant. It's not my idea of a public park.
Well, if the, again, I'm not saying that it would be reserved for the restaurant, but if restaurant people sat there, the city gets money from the meals tax and from other taxes. So there is a benefit to the city, and it makes the area more vibrant.
It's just somewhat remedied.
Okay, I thi, I think we got the gist of it. I, I just have one sort of, I, I, I don't know, kind of technical question. Are you, have you, have you, I don't mean this in a controversial way, it may sound it that way, or have you kind of given up on the idea of the land banking, since you're spending the money in the other, the other ways?
No, no.
So, so I think I'm, I'm sort of, wanted to echo Melissa's question, this is where the question comes from. If, if this were, you know, 100 grand, you got a million seven fifty, a million seven kicking around, that's still enough to do something, you could leverage it up, it's kind of an exciting amount of money. To spend this kind of money on this project, you, you're taking the wind out of your sails here a little bit, and it seems like going in a different direction.
It is going in a bit of direct, different direction, but we think that this is going to help...
But you're not going to be able to do a lot with a million two. Now, if you're not worried about that, I guess we shouldn't be either, but...
We think rather than sitting on the million eight with the hope or potential of some opportunity to use it, that using it on this will spur lots of other great activity and investment and revenue to the city as a result, economic activity in that block and downtown area and beyond.
But by who? By, by like, could, is there a specific property that you're, because, because you're two immediate neighbors, that's not going to happen?
Well, for example, the potential of people, of the alleyway behind the building on the 100 and 200 block becoming more of a pedestrian plaza and attaching to this. The potential of, you know, encouraging people to park at Kaiser and walk over to Dogwood Tavern and the restaurants over there in Four Peace, making that all more connected and more vibrant.
Start on that.
Uh, okay, okay.
Well, yeah, I think, I think revitalizing the area is a good idea. I too have a little bit of a problem with the amount that you're spending from the landbank, but...
Yes, Ms. Hockenberry. Last question for you.
Yeah, well, I think you're getting to the point that if the, not moving that, the transformer would probably lessen the amount. But also, Cindy, and one of the last times we talked about this, any possibility of any grant funding for a project like that, that could be matching grant from the EDA?
There is some grant funds out for parks. It's not as available as transportation. Paul, you were recently looking at some of that with the parks chapter. Anything come to mind?
Nothing's great in mind.
Yeah. This, yeah. This is also not as much of a park as a downtown public plaza with an economic development special place feel, so it's a little different. Sometimes you can get stuff for, you know, the open space park.
Well, it might be an interesting thing to investigate, to see if there could be grant funding that the EDA could then match with their money.
The EDA's goal in coming up with this idea and putting its own money up was to sort of, was to try to cut through the red tape and cut through the delay and get this done and help spur that downtown area. And I, I understand that it's not the way that things are usually done and that there's great questions, and I welcome continued dialogue with the Planning Commission on this and other issues.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you.
Yeah, pursuing grants and managing grants would change the timeline for sure.
Yeah.
Does the Planning Commission have any specific direction on this project in terms of how you'd like to see it in the motion, or it stays incorporated as presented?
Would you ask that question again, Cindy?
Specific questions.
I heard specific questions, about what?
For the motion next week, do you want this project to stay as staff has presented it, and then it'd be incorporated in the motion, or do you have, like, the library or the public parking, some thoughts, you might want to change something? Just trying to get a feel for how I can best bring the motion forward next week as it relates to this specific project.
Well, because this is on a fast track, is this, when we vote on the CIP, is this what we're getting, or will we, will it come before us as a development, as some development normally would?
When you adopt the CIP, you will be approving the money and the preferred concept of Option 3B. It has to have more work on detailed design, because this is not a detailed architectural engineering design, and it will come before you for a site plan. So you will see much more detail.
And it will come with the site plan, presumably will then resolve this transformer issue.
Correct, as well as the alley would have to be resolved before you could approve a site plan.
Is that 3B? Is with the alley or without the alley?
3B is the preferred motion that has...
So this is 3B?
Includes using the alley.
Yeah, so they want 3B.
Wanted to make sure I didn't misspeak.
You want 3B, and we're looking at 3A.
Well, I guess, I mean, one of the things I thought about is, you know, originally, one of the first sheets we got with everything laid out, the one that pointed out how much money it was going to take to move the transformer, I think it was at about 350, and I'm just wondering, you know, one of the things we could think about is changing the amount back down to 350, because I just think 550 is just way, that's a lot of money to be using out of that.
And just keep the transformer?
Yeah, and just keep the transformer and shield it.
The 350 was just the hard costs and doesn't include acquiring alley, it just assumes negotiated agreement. The additional money is all the final engineering design, soft costs, site plan, and then 50,000 was added at the last EDA meeting to ensure we had construction management dollars available to staff this project so it could go now. Otherwise, it needs to be delayed or one of these other projects needs to be delayed. So 550 included all the soft costs, the 350 that you're recalling was more the hard costs. It did include the transformer, so that's the $1 amount that could change.
Well, let us come back to this, because I don't know that we're going to reach any sort of deeper wisdom at this moment. I, I think, I, I, it's, I mean, I'm trying to put this in the form of a question. It would seem to me we sort of need to know whether the alley and the transformer are going to be there or not be there. And it seems like if I were doing the site plan, I think I'd want to keep the alley, just knowing that block the way I do, but I don't know if we need to make that decision if we do the CIP. It seems to me we don't need to make that decision, but I defer. I'm not, I have no opinion at this time.
I would recommend that that decision comes later, once we have the money approved and we can do more detailed engineering designs and negotiate with the property owner in particular on the alley. It will certainly be decided at the time there's a site plan before you, because that would totally change what was being approved.
Got it.
All right, moving on to transportation then. As I showed within the presentation, the first document in Tab 8, which is your transportation, is our transportation project cycle, where we've really tried to take the planning efforts from comp plan, area plans, and master plans, like the W and O D plan that you just approved this evening, and then turn it into specific projects, go for grants, CIPs, and then move into implementation. So tonight, we're talking about the CIP part of that, and you have in Tab 3, a transportation summary page, which is what I have up here, and then under Tab 8 is all the projects in detail. This one, as we talked about in the highlight of the initial work session, has a lot of green. So for FY '17, you see 6.2 million. That green is only if we get grant funded. There is no pay-go or water sale proceeds in FY '17 or beyond in the five-year window. There is a good amount of grant money and a small amount of debt finance. Some of the green are grants that we've already applied for, like the bicycles project. There is grant money out there, as Mr. Stoddard indicated, all of it does need match money. I'll come back to the match money piece in a minute, because I have some follow-up to the questions raised last week, but we do have staff here this evening. Let's see who's still here. We have Stephanie and James, who work on a lot of the transportation, Mike and Paul, and Jim is still here. So all of us are very involved in the transportation, and so I, instead of going one by one through all of them, I'd like to see if there's specific ones that you have questions about in terms of timing, the money, any of the implementation, and we'll address it that way.
I don't think I understood on your 3B item 3, the 4 cents annually...
That's the transportation match follow-up, as well as to the capital reserve. So at the last work session, the question was, what tax rate increase would be necessary in order to turn these green in transportation, as well as the IT mobility access and the facilities in the out year where there's no money to reinvest? What would it take to make those...
Oh, so, and facilities?
Yeah. So it's transportation and facilities...
Okay.
Combined would take 4 cents.
Okay, so that, you answered my question. So the 4 cents is facilities plus transportation?
And IT.
Okay.
And it would be an ongoing basis, and then you'll notice under, right under that is where it says requires 5 cents. That would be if we actually wanted to put money into the reserves and build the reserves so we weren't always in crisis mode, because if you do 4 cents, pretty much we'll fund it, use it, and have to fund it and use it the next year. Better than where we are today, but if you actually wanted to build a capital reserve so we could handle a larger-scale facility need, like Aurora House or the property yard, we would be building a reserve instead of having a crunch point where we're doing City Hall, library, and two schools all within a 10-year window. That's what the 5 cents was entitled to message. It would put an additional 1 cent into building the capital reserve up. Per the adopted policy, that's not currently being funded.
So if, if we approve this CIP as presented, are we voting for a 4-cent tax rate, rate increase?
No, because these items are green, are still green. You would only be voting for 4 cents or recommending it, since you can't actually vote for a tax rate increase, if you put into one of your motions that you recommend council identify regular ongoing... identify regular ongoing dedicated funding such as four cents.
I see.
So Mr. Jean had specifically asked that last work session, what would it take to turn green into yellow Pago?
I see. And, and these, these numbers that are in light green that will only proceed with if you get the money. Okay. Okay, the ones that are total debt financed, I guess those are in white?
White italics is debt, yes.
Debt financed, are they financed through what? Through bonds?
Yeah, we would issue bonds in the...
But not, you wouldn't issue a bond for $60,000.
No, it would be combined with other debt. So for example...
Yeah, you'd just combine it with something else.
Yeah. So a city hall's been approved, we have issued all of that. So when we go to do that, we'd look, okay, what else is left? FY '17's been approved, then we issue it. There's also some financing mechanisms where we can approve a resolution and reimburse ourselves up to 18 months back. So we can wait to issue it for a big school project. Yeah. It would not be cost effective for the cost of issuance to do something.
Why is Wamata green?
Because right now, there isn't a regular match money dedicated to fund that.
We, we pay an amount every year though, don't we?
We are required to pay an amount every year for operating capital. In good years, that comes out of the transportation trust fund that is predominantly funded with state money and gas tax. As gas tax has gone down and the price of gas has gone down, that has gone, trust fund's gone down. And so now we're looking at having to budget it. It's in the special transportation fund because when we fund it, it actually now can leverage and draw down the NVTA 30% money. And so we get the one to four to five ratio.
Ah.
It will need to, we have a legal obligation. So at some point, that has to be figured out. And we're currently working with the city manager on how that can be done, but it will probably take a tax rate increase to do that or cut. I will notice, remind you in the survey for question number three, that almost 52% of the respondents, which was about 120 in this sample, supported a two-cent tax increase for transportation. So of the four cents that we talked before, if two cents went towards transportation, we'd be maximizing our drawdown on the 30% NVTA match.
Okay.
So are there any particular questions that you would like to ask on any of the specific projects?
Nope. None here.
I just think that it's very important to have that ongoing infrastructure money, extremely so.
And to Ms. Rogers' point, you won't be adopting that within the CIP, but as you've done in the past, you could do an intent motion like you did with city hall.
Right, right.
You recommend council finance the task force recommendation.
Penny wise and a pound foolish.
Okay. Anybody got anything else? Anyone for anything? Anyone? Anything going once?
So that covers what was on my memo to present to you all. So it's just if there's any direction that you wish to give me in preparing the motions for next week, I'll be glad to take it. Otherwise, I will consider what was said and give you a menu of options.
What are the options, generally speaking, about that school? I know we were going to talk about it with the school representative next week, but I guess I left that conversation not clear about what our options are since that number to me is sort of unvetted, extremely high timing, the process, all those other things we talked about earlier. What sort of options would we have for that $100 million in terms of a motion? I know you said one was we could separate it out, but I don't know what the ramifications of that are since now this is in the current year.
Well, you could separate it out and take a separate motion in case the majority of the commissioners wanted everything else and it would be a 7-0 vote. But if some didn't want to vote on the schools, it could be a separate vote so you could voice your opinion differently. But beyond that, the planning commission can always move the year, eliminate it. You did do that on Cherry Street and put the money on Mount Daniel to send a, send a clear message of what your intent and concern was. You could reduce the dollar amount or you could approve it as is, but state that you have specific concerns about X, Y, and Z, whether it's process, not having clear enough delineation of what's in the dollar amount, the design features. So you actually have quite a bit of options as to how you want that motion structured. It is, at the end of the day, still not resolved enough in terms of the P3 to be able to answer for you all, is that the right dollar amount? And this is the design? And can we see it publicly?
So I remember from previous years, the $100 million was not possible under any scenario under our current guideline, debt guidelines. So then, so what the theory was in the past was, well, it's a placeholder, but some enormous portion of this is going to have to be covered by some agreement with a developer. Yet, we're sort of going down that road, but we're still showing this $100 million. And I don't really have a great, great sense of what we can and can't afford with our, with the city's portion of it.
That's a good point.
Like if it's at 40 million, let's say somehow we, we say, we're going to take responsibly for 40 million of it. Is that something we can even afford at 40 million? Or is that number go up higher? I really, that number's so unattainable, I don't see myself approving anything that says 100 million in a current year, is my personal view on it. But I don't know where to go with it. That's really, we've already talked about it here for, you know, 20, 30 minutes and I'm not sure how to proceed because that number doesn't, in good conscience, I can't approve something that is just not understood by me.
Well, and that kind of comes back to my thought too, is like the 100 million is supposed to be offset by a certain amount of economic development or some part of this public-private partnership.
Right.
So why do we have 100 million in there anyway? Shouldn't we have the amount that we as a city can afford, knowing that the rest they have to deal with?
Actually, in terms of budgeting, you'd have to approve the entire dollar amount of the project.
Yeah, okay.
And before you could go to bond, you'd have to be saying, this is the project cost because you couldn't do a construction contract unless you had appropriated the full amounts. Legally, you have to.
It has to be into CIP then?
But just like we do with our other projects where there's grants, you would show the multiple funding sources. Tab three in the financial fund balance...
Can, can we...
This CIP has you at 9.8%. The policy is 12%.
So we have room.
We've done this scenarios. You have some room, but it really isn't more than, it's in the window of 40 to 50 million, depending on what our other debt capacity is. So when we've modeled it before, we've done it at about 50 million and you stay within the policy limit, but that's a significant tax increase. And so that would be the trade-off. You could afford it even with the economic development, there's probably still some tax.
But could we still put it in there as two lines then? Could we break the high school into what we can actually cover, the policy limit, the 40 million? And then the other rest be in there separately as, you know, as special financing?
If financing is available.
Yeah, or maybe, maybe that, that stays in the red and the debt we can finance is in white and it's two different lines. Because at least then it's a realistic picture of this is what we can actually debt finance and this is what would have to come from another source.
You could do that. We do it with transportation. So for example, downtown POA is there three times. And one of that is because it's federal money, local debt, and state money, which on the project sheet, it would show you the different funding sources.
Yeah, because I noticed in transportation, like multiple things are listed more than once because of different sources. I would at the very least like to see us break the high school into two lines, what we can debt finance realistically and then what would have to come from somewhere else. Because then at least...
But she just said, even if we debt finance 50 million, it would be a significant tax increase? How significant is significant?
A lot. And it probably wouldn't hit FY '17 because you would do the bond referendum and then you would start the design and you usually, you know, plan it so that the debt service would impact FY '18. It would be approximate, let me, let me get...
I mean, are we still working off that 386,000 per one penny?
Yes, 386,000 per penny.
So it's...
You know, you've got about 5% to 6% that you have to figure interest and principal kind of payment. So you'd be jumping, not all in one year, but we could potentially be somewhere between eight and 10 cents.
10 cents.
And, and part of it also, you know, our assessed value, depending on what our assessed value does when Harris Teeter fully opens and Lincoln, it could vary. When Mary Ellen Henderson went out to bond referendum, which was totally debt financed, it was projected to be 17 cents. It actually never happened because the assessed value in the city went up.
But, but with Mount Daniel, when they, the bond referendum went out and they have all that money now, are they, are you saying they're not paying on that money? They're only paying on a portion of that money? They're only doing debt payment on a portion of that money?
No, we're paying on the money that's been issued. I have to check with Mr. LaConde. I think it was phased, so some of the upfront was interest and lower and then it picked up later. But any of the money that's been debt issued, we're paying.
So why, why wouldn't the, say, I'm just pulling 50 million out, why wouldn't the 50 have to be paid the same way?
Well, it, it could be, but Mount Daniel, remember, we did 1 million in the first year and then another piece. So there's a couple tranches that have already been out there, so you have to pay on them versus usually what we do if it's like in FY '17, we don't issue the debt until the second half of the fiscal year. So your first payment, just like your mortgage and your house when you buy, it's usually not for a couple months. It just, we time it to hit the next fiscal year.
And I'm getting what you're saying, like we're talking about if we put that 40 million or 50 million, we're talking about a high amount of taxes. But I don't think, I think that should, needs to be part of the discussion with the public because even, there's no way we're going to cover the whole cost of this project with economic development. We're not. We all know that. So we know that if it is 100 million, we are covering 40 or 50 million. There's no way around it. And I, I think we'd have to cover almost, I think, I think we're actually going to find out that, I don't think economic development's going to cover another 50 million. I really don't. So I don't know what we're going to do there. But, but at least then we're realistic. We're just saying, in the CIP, realistically, if it is debt financed, we can only fit 40 or 50 million in there.
Under, under our present...
Under our present rules so that as we're moving forward with this process, at least it's clear to everyone that that is all we can do. And everything else is going to have to come from some magical academic development land there you make a lot of money off of this one-third of the property.
I think that, that's a good idea.
That's a good idea and I think that clears up the confusion of what this $100 million really represents. Because what, because I think Russ said it the best. I mean, like, like it just is, it could just this number that is, it's just hard to vote. How do you vote for $100 million? It's just like meaningless in a way. That's, that's very good. Okay, see, it took us...
Between your idea and...
Yeah, it took us a while to get here, but there you go.
Well, I can do that so that it's within policy limits. That also helps message what can the city afford. Economic development, there also is the challenge of cash flow because the school comes on before a full build-out of the economic development, which is the other reason you kind of have to message, this is what the project cost is. So if that doesn't happen, taxpayers will feel liable.
Well, I, I think that, you know, if you're trying to get a referendum passed, I think you just have to tell people what they're in for. I mean, I don't know that you can...
Say, oh, well, this is for the school and it's going to have a swimming pool.
Yeah. I, I think, I think you have to tell what people, like a referendum, what you're voting for. I mean, I don't think that, I don't know how you do it any other way.
That's why the, all the schools' referendums have said, and you know, the approximate impact on the tax rate is, we did it at Mary Ellen, you did it for Mount Daniel because, you know, if some, those didn't have economic development, so it was, it's going to get funded if we approve it. This one, you'd probably still put the same tax equivalency there because you can't guarantee the economic development even with the greatest plan in place.
I think it'd be a lot more truthful than what we're, we've been doing. And I wouldn't even put in the max that we could under policy, you know, because I think even the max would be crazy. Because you never know what else you're going to, that doesn't give you wiggle room for anything else, so.
So you think putting 40 in the...
You know, I would say, you know, rather than coming up to 12%...
We can't fit 60 in there. We can't fit 60.
Rather than coming up to 12%, the full 12% of the legal that to come in, say around 10.
Well, one of my questions was going to be on the five, one of my questions for next week is on the 5 million for Mary Ellen Henderson. So is the real number 35 plus five or is it 40 plus five? I mean, that's one of the...
I thought about that too, that Mary Ellen Henderson being at 5 million should also be pay-as-you-go. So it's really like, do we have 40 million to put for the high school and 5 for that? And then the other, and then we put it out there, the other 55 is the special...
And then they want 4 million, 4 million for land acquisition.
So we're talking 109 million.
Okay.
What is that school land acquisition? I don't remember that.
That's, we're supposed to do that next week.
Nobody's explained it to us.
That would be so that they have cash available, similar to the open space 1 million to buy land if the opportunity comes up for property adjacent to an existing school. You might be able to figure out what land and school they're thinking of.
Personally, I think that should be put out to 2020 because I think that...
Well, but it's an emergency.
Well, I know, but if right now, we're dealing with the properties we have, I don't think we have time to deal with additional properties. I think that that, I personally, I don't know how you guys feel, but that's something I would push out.
I wouldn't.
Well, maybe they'll tell us what property they're thinking about.
Yeah, maybe.
I mean, my only question is if it's a...
No, they won't. I mean, that would be foolish.
It's been talked about probably enough publicly and I was told I could mention. It's near TJ.
Yes.
And so part of pushing it out could be that they lose the opportunity.
Okay.
Right. And we, and it could be really a contingency for you.
I don't, what property?
I will, I'll tell you.
The street?
The big house.
Fellows.
I think they just subdivided that to put houses...
We have, but they haven't, we have done the subdivision, but it hasn't, nothing's happened on it.
They have filed it, but they haven't responded to all the comments, so it hasn't been processed to come forward to you.
In addition to breaking out the, the high school into these two categories, can you also make it a separate motion, part of a several carve-out in terms of the motion? Because, because I'm still not sure it's got my support. So similar to, similar to last year?
Similar to this, where last year, we approved all the CIP minus the two schools and then we had a separate motion. But this year, the separate motion would then further break out what's debt financed and what's pink financing plan. And would you want Mary Ellen Henderson's 5 million as just debt and then split the high school until the overall high school would be less...
Yeah, I think we have to do that because I think that 5 million is going to be debt anyway.
Yeah.
And I'm fine with the land acquisition. I didn't realize they actually have property in mind. Because if they have property in mind, then it's 40...
Reasonable to leave it in there. It is reasonable, so.
But Cindy, in, in proposing, could you give us a couple of options of, of the 10%, you know, how much that would leave us for any other possibilities and maybe a couple of options of, we're now at eight, right?
9.8.
Nine?
End of the five-year as approved, as presented to you, it'd be 9.8.
Okay.
So it'd have to be higher than 10. I mean, it's going to be pretty close to the 12% to get a fair amount of the high school dollar amount in there.
And Lenny, I understand your concern about trying to leave some wiggle room in there, but I think at this point, if we're going to do, I mean, we just aren't going to have wiggle room. I think we just have to accept that we're going to be like 11.8 or something.
Yeah, okay. But I just think, I, I do think that it's, it's a great idea to do that because otherwise, we're lying to everybody.
No, I just wanted realistic, I want a realistic, as much realism as possible in this situation.
Okay. We are adjourned.
Thank you very much, and I'll see you on the 22nd. The superintendent's planning to join me and then look at the motions.
Yes.
We are adjourned, but I was confused. At your last meeting, you asked how many people wanted hard copies and how many people wanted e-copies? And everybody was standing up and waving their arms around, trying to put coats on and stuff. So if I could take a bit of your patience and ask you one by one, who, I know you want a hard copy.
I want a hard copy.
Russ?
All electronic.
Okay, thank you. Yes? Okay. Thank you.
And Chairman Meeks, Mr. Snyder asked me to remind you all of council's retreat this Saturday.
Yeah.
To a TJ Elementary Library with a specific invite at 11 o'clock to have a dialogue with council on boards and commissions, roles, functions, and relationships.
What is this Saturday?
It's the city council retreat.
Oh, where is it?
It's going to be TJ.
TJ?
Oak Street entrance in the library where we did it two years ago, two years ago. And so the whole session is 9 to 12, 2, and we'll be focusing on the work plan, updating the last work plan, so they have a focus for the two years going forward and what our staff resources need to be. But specifically, 11 to 12 will be a discussion with the chairs or the designee of the boards and commissions to talk about interrelations, working relationships, roles of council versus planning commission versus CACT, for example. And then there will be a light lunch available for any of you that are there as they wrap up and continue working. And I think the city clerk asked for an RSVP if possible, just so we can help plan the food. Thank you very much, commissioners.